All right, good morning. We will roll call in. First we'll do the Select Board, Russ.
Today is Saturday, March 19th. This is the combined meeting of the Select Board and Finance Committee. This meeting is being recorded.
Excellent. Good morning. We'll call in. Select Board will go first. Russ Fox, Vice Chairman.
Doug Moglen, Clerk.
Okay, our panel president from Finance Committee.
Karen DeMayo, Finance Committee.
David Murphy, Finance Committee.
Terry Mish, Finance Committee.
Alita DiMaria, Finance Committee. Lisa Samuel, Finance Committee.
Thank you. And wait a minute, we have Chairman DeeDee coming in, so we will hold off. All rise.
One minute to eight.
You're turning some bad habits.
They just lied to me now. They said I'm gonna be here at 7:30 if they want me here for 8 o'clock.
We already will call in. We're all set to go with assessors are number one.
Mr. Vice Chairman, Chairman, I'd just like to make a quick announcement. We have three groups coming up shortly. That would be Community Preservation, Conservation Commission, and the Ags Mission. All three of those groups are currently reviewing a 61A right of first refusal on property that I own. So when they come up, I will step aside so as not to have a conflict of interest at the table. And I'll turn the responsibilities over to Mr. Mish at that time. So right after assessors, I'll be out in the audience.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Morning to you.
Good morning. How are you today? Wonderful. Anything new or exciting? Oh, does not look it. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. That's all you have? Do you want to have any questions?
Where are we at a revalue or something like that?
I'm sorry? Okay. Every five years? Yeah, twelve?
Mr. Chairman, our, we have multiple copiers in building and so the town functions. Are they all under contract with the same individuals? Did we have like three or four different arrangements going on with different companies and that sort of thing? I thought it was more where one of the contracts is we actually pay a fee per copy and that includes the maintenance aspect to the equipment and stuff like that.
Laura's on the line, actually. She can, she might be able to answer to that.
Laura, are you there?
It's, she's muted.
Well.
There she is.
Bang your fist on the table.
Each copier does have its own contract. And we do pay by, you know, each page that we do print.
And they're all through the same vendor, or are we?
Um, they are. There's two vendors that we use. Majority of them are through one vendor and then the ones who have a different copier have it through another vendor, that vendor.
Okay, and I assume that there's some level of efficiency by having two different vendors for copiers. They may have some differences themselves, abilities, capabilities of different machinery, equipment, hardware. Oh, good. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, I'm recusing myself. Mr. Mish, you're in charge.
You got SEMAs up next, right? Oh, no, it's. Sit down, Terry.
Morning, Charlie. How are you today?
I'm excellent. Just short of purpose.
We'll see what we can do about that. We'll fix you right up this morning.
Normally don't get up this early. Our budget's pretty much status quo. We're getting over the COVID situation, supply chain problems, and how the world has changed. So we're just kind of growing with it and trying to get back to normal. This might have been such a thing. I have no capital. We do not have the auxiliary police. What we transferred over to Chief of Police, I don't know, to part of the defunding of the police organizations, what I'm hearing. So there'll be no ammunition supplies.
I don't believe it's defunding the police charges. The police reform.
Chair, I got a question for Charlie. Charlie, you've got education and insurance and dues. Are those correct in the correct columns? The budget was 100 and that for one and 1,000 for the other, and then it's like switched 900 for the one that was 100 and 100 for the one that was 1,000.
Yes, that is a good catch. That is correct. That is reversed. Our education should be 1,000 and that can be changed around a little bit because of a lot of the education courses are now done virtually on the air. We don't and some of them have been eliminated due to COVID. So the $100 should be for insurance and dues should be dropped. Well, let's see, the $1,000, that is not, would not be correct because we do not have the auxiliary police and that's where a lot of our dues went to is the police associations.
So is 200 a more appropriate number instead of that 1,000?
I would say yes. It's, you know, for me right now, the status of the situations that we're facing, I would say this would be a good estimate.
I think it's both are, I think you flip it and change it to 200.
Yes.
Yeah, if we go a whole years past.
Okay.
Just for clarification, so the education line is going to be what?
200.
200. And the insurance and dues is going to be what?
100.
Any luck I can get my Humvee yet?
No, we left that in Afghanistan. I'm sorry. You mean an example of what minor equipment comes up? Yes, minor equipment would be office supplies, pens, pencils, and then we were talking earlier about copiers. We do have our own copiers, the EOC downstairs. It's a printer copier. It would be laser injects and supplies for the copy. Now, we do have the EOC downstairs. We also maintain the ultimate EOC at the DPW. And then we have a mobile vehicle which takes, you know, additional supplies. EOC is Emergency Operations Center. That's where we coordinate or major disaster. About 16 times a year, we get our 100 severe weather reportings. So we activate whether it turns into anything serious or not. Be there to give government a place for maintenance and keep it open. And then we coordinate with all the adjacent communities, all of the volunteer in town, the state, and the whole country.
Anyone else have questions, sir? You guys ready?
Okay, I do have those further back. I'm looking for a, if we possibly transfer a town vehicle instead of turning it in for, or putting it out for auction. I would have to use my personal vehicle for a lot of small trucks and what have you. So I'm asking for a vehicle that may be turned in for something like, you know, the town full car. When we need vehicles for transportation, it's on weekends or nights or it's not convenient. I have to go get the keys in the Selectman's Office. It's locked up. Coordinate with the town clerk because they're using the vehicle to run the post office or what have you. So looking for a used vehicle instead of being turned in for our use.
Yeah, we talked about that earlier.
Yes. So other than that, you know, for a volunteer basis, and right now it's tough to get volunteers with the amount of training that's required under incident command system, weather training that's required under emergency management, civil events. You know, there's a lot of hoops to jump through. People are reluctant to volunteer now because we're like, you know, it's severe weather. That's when we're activated and come in. And if there's a blizzard, how many people are going to be willing to come in for a blizzard and stay home right now? We have a lot of dedicated people and I had three applicants, unfortunately, health situations did not avail. So we're looking for good people. There's a lot of wannabes out there that they'd like to wear the clothes or be a participant or do anything or not through the training that's required. I remember there are under 10. Right now we have six, but I'd like to have 10. And we lost a few due to the auxiliary police being transferred. So our members, we have Radio Amateur Civil Emergency Service. These must have FCC licenses for communications. Emergency Management that helped operate the EOC. And then we have the CERT team, which is under Federal Citizens Corps, under Homeland Security. That's emergency response. And they would assist with opening up the EOC and shelter for the agency under emergency running generators. And is there any budget items that are funded by FEMA or any other agency? Grant programs?
We haven't been as successful as we have been in the past in getting, Charlie's been getting us some grants.
Yeah, everybody writes long grants.
Right. It's competitive, you know, but we have received grants in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Have a good day.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you very much. And I missed a lot for you.
As we all do.
I'm stepping out of a reason previously stated.
CPC. We got it. We got no budget.
Hi. Good morning. Wonderful.
Community Preservation. You did that.
Yeah, yeah, after is fine. Yeah, yeah, just read it out.
So basically, this is just the draft of our accounting of each category in CPC work and are distributed each year. On the back is what projects were done and the amount that was distributed from, actually from 2021. So it kind of breaks down the funds. So just to, just to kind of review on something, in November of 2021, the DOR distributed funds for the state, and that happens every year. And then this year, there was a record high distribution of funds that came from the state. So a total of $79 million was distributed statewide. And then because there was such an influx of funds that were received in January, there was another 10 million that was distributed to all CPA communities or communities that had community preservation fund. The total match with, that came from the state with the town's 3% tax. It was 43.8%. So it was one of the highest matches since the inception of the Community Preservation Act that occurred in 2000. So what did that equate to the dollars? It equated to a total of $340,000 and $320,000, that was the match. That was the match above the 3%. And they were distributed, they're distributing around. So in the first round, South had received 141,000 or 142,000. And then Rounds Two and Rounds Three respectively, it was 120,000 and then 78,000 in Round Three. So we were one of the biggest, for town of our size, we were one of the biggest and the result increased just, just kind of, just to give you a background, was because in 2009, they passed legislation to increase funds through registered needs. And I'm kind of likened to the housing fund. So with all those funds, that's how the the state CPAs funded from this, registered needs. So I wonder, excuse me, I wonder if we can put that up in front of the owl? Would I be able to see it or is that not work?
We could take a second to make a copy if you want.
Yeah, if that's okay by you.
Sure.
Yeah, that's.
We can get conservation out of the way while we're gone if you want.
Thanks, Charlie. For punch please, and we're on our way. We get our Saturdays back.
Did I hear a train going by?
Yeah, how is conservation? Looks like it's, nothing's changed.
No.
Yeah.
Actually, we're asking for more money. But we'll get into that.
All right.
Yeah, right? That's okay. You want smart future citizens. I tell you, we got a couple, I'm on the master plan. We got a couple of crazy soft ones on. That's our future, man. These kids are whips, man.
That's two of them, right?
Two of them.
Okay. How many kids are in that class? I see the other side of that world because I have to actually hire those kids. Yes, those two kids are awesome. They absolutely are. But anytime you want to come over, I can show you some of the nice ones.
Can I live in my lollipop world?
Yes, you can. Yes, you earned it. You earned it. Yeah. So those are two good kids.
They presented like this.
I sat in on that. Yeah.
For kids, I mean sophomores, what are they, 15, 16 years old? The way they presented to a group of adults with, you know, a whole Zoom audience was absolutely impressive. Did my job. The young man, I swear, is going to be better in this country.
As you can see, it details from 2019 to 2022. In the left column, you can see the increase in funding. The last two years, there was quite an increase, especially like I had spoken about. From the 2021, 2022 increase was due to the the high amount of funds that were raised in the state.
Yeah, I mean, your budget pretty much is self-sufficient. You take money and vote at the annual town meeting for administration, things like that. And, and I think most people know that we're looking at combining Conservation Commission Coordinator and someone else help with administration and community preservation.
Yes, so to make you feel a little better in the future, your, your packet will be continued in full in the meantime when we have our official CPC administrative staff.
One can hold.
Well, that, that is the point.
But that will impact that administrative bucket, right? The salary for that person for the hours that they're going to be working solely through the CPC side of their job is going to come out as administrative.
And then each year, those unused funds go back into the unreserved. That's how that goes.
And that's a benefit to taxpayers because it doesn't belong to tax law. So
Absolutely.
So it's a, it's a win-win situation. It helps with administration, plus it helps tax. Well, this is all tax dollars anyways. Now, it's not free money.
Correct.
So the items on the back page.
So in relation to, I'm sorry, the items on the back page were all projects that were approved by CPC and those, those were the dollar amounts that were distributed to the applicant for whatever they had requested, the repairs or historical project. So that's, that's what came out of the budget and what was approved. And then if you look in the second column left, it kind of breaks it down as to where, as to what the funding was and when it was approved at the annual town meeting.
So those are all spoken for and funded and asked for now?
Yes, there's still, there's still a couple of projects that are not finished. One being the North Onyar project is not finished and I can't, I can't tell you, I don't have an update for it on that.
Fire station, I think.
Fire station, yep. And then the owl treatment is, is kind of an ongoing thing and that's, that's just based on when the treatment is, occurs. And we currently have a few applicants requesting funds as well. And we are trying to prepare applicants in the future. So that we have, you know, we have quite a bit of funds to need and return. Not that we want to deplete everything, but we want to encourage the town to participate in this. As said, it is taxpayer money as well. Do you have any projects or know of any projects to use a project fund? Because over the years, that keeps growing.
It grows, yes. So are there any, no, just that the town could think of.
I mean, the last project that was done for housing was there was some upgrades to the depot court. Windows and that's mostly the stuff that comes from the housing for, for community-based housing.
And there's no negotiation with the state in terms of, you know, base.
No, there isn't. But we're also, because of our type of town layout, as opposed to, let's say, you know, a whole oak or a Boston town where they're in, you know, they're using a lot of their funding for housing with low income and things like that. Correct. We don't necessarily have that income, so it makes it kind of hard to think of what we can raise.
Maybe like Deepwater Street or Avery.
Yes. And we can always, you know, we could always approach Housing Authority and inquire if there are any other things that they are looking to, to really, to, you know, upgrade or, or anything like that.
And we have done that in the past. And the 25,000 is their share of the master plan. So that was a good use of that money to pay that particular share. But no, we've reached out to the Housing Authority. The Housing Authority is really in flux because they want to regionalize all housing authorities. Matter of fact, there's Matter of fact, there's going to be a change eventually. We're one of our, we're going to lose one of our elected members to that board. And it will be a tenant takeover as a member of that board. As Jeannie knows, as her mother, she's a long-time member of that, that committee. So a lot of things are in flux. Matter of fact, the director also is involved with Westfield, you know, currently. Whereas in the past, we had Bud Engelhardt, I don't know if you remember Bud, but he pretty much took care of Southwood by himself. It's, it's changing. Any other questions, Ross? Left in the back.
Thank you.
Conservation. Good morning again, everybody.
Morning. You know what we haven't done, been doing, Mr. Chairman, like forget, we shouldn't be announcing who's here or speaking. Yeah, we had Charlie from Seema, Charlie Dunlap, Jeannie, you know, Reed Waldron has just left, yeah, chairman of the community preservation and.
Yeah, I know most of you are, a good portion of you, but I'm Dave McWilliams. I'm the chair of Conservation Commission, so I'm happy to sit here today before you and beg the money.
Wonder.
Yeah. So there's not really, we're not, we're not looking for a tremendous amount of change from a conservation standpoint. We're somewhat status quo with what we're looking for. Everything that we've had in the past, we're going to need to move forward. Part of that is land maintenance. And that is taking care of the properties that conservation hasn't been purged. The open spaces disappeared and what have you. This year, moving forward, we're going to be digging into that pretty deeply. I think also we know there's some activity over at Pond that needs to be rectified. So myself and a couple of other board members had a walk-through with the Department of Forestry and Wildlife a couple of weeks ago. Those are the folks who own the conservation certificate for the properties. We're going to need to do some bailing. We're going to need to get some wells basically to keep erosion from happening. There's a couple of pretty significant cutouts above the pond that are eroding silt down into the pond. So we're going to have to stop that and then we, that, that'll be a short-term thing. But then we're going to need to actually bring in some equipment to provide a long-term solution to that runoff. So we're going to be digging into those funds pretty deeply later on this year. Don't have any estimates yet. That'll be, that'll be probably every quarter without, like, you know. I think we're going to be able to get some policy work on that as well, so. We talked to DBW. If the intent is to go with wood chips, Randy Brown, who he has all the wood chips he would ever need. Mass, the State Department of Wildlife, we prefer not to use wood chips. They would like to use just some brush thrown in there. It decays slower. It will stop the sheet flow coming down the hill. It won't actually wash off into the lake in a heavy rain like wood chips might. So the state's going to be doing some cutting on their side of the property over the wildlife area. And we're going to try and work with them to get whatever brush we can hauled over and brought into those, those gullies. So you may hear some motorized vehicles out there. If you hear those, we will certainly clear that with both state and the police department. Those will probably be using ATVs to drag that stuff over. That is on the dotted string.
How come this wasn't an issue when the previous landowners owned the land and now there's an issue with the town?
It was.
Just nothing was being done.
Right. I mean, those, those channels that are over there are 20 years old. And people riding dirt bikes and all of that was happening all along, right? It's ours now. It's an issue that needs to be taken care of and we're going to take care of it. And there's, it's allocated in our budget to do stuff like that. So yeah, nothing, well, I don't want to say nothing is new. I mean, there was one instance where a budding neighbor came up to the property with some equipment that you shouldn't have, right? And that's been addressed. It's been rectified. He's not coming out to the property anymore. Notified multiple times through enforcement orders and personal communications. We walked him through the property and educated him as to why what he was doing was not a benefit but a detriment. So I believe he's pretty much on board. So that is a one-time incident, but the main incident that's going on is that. And there's still kids going through their motorcycles. You know, there's only so much you can do about that, you know, without having to keep you sit out there 24 hours a day with cameras and what have you. But, you know, it's really cut down and quite honestly, Karen, since the town took it over, it's better than ever. I mean, we've had so many volunteer groups go out there and take out dumpsters full of trash, right? And you wouldn't be able to walk through there without going 100 yards and the paths are out to the right. It looks really good right now. It's not perfect. There's work left to be done, but it's moving in like a. Right?
So, where's the cost for your, the news that you're talking about?
It's under land maintenance.
So within $4,000 or $4,600, that's all of them?
Yeah, there's not a lot. I mean, we do some mowing up itself in Ofski's field around the, the public gardens. There's some that's done on the trail off the rising corners. So for the most part, it's just ongoing maintenance since that come up. Due, so each member of the commission is part of the National Association of Conservation Commissioners that comes with dues. It's where we get our education. It's where we take good with what's going on. Typically, that ties right into the traveling conference with COVID. The majority of that has been done via Zoom. It's actually ongoing right now. My expectation is probably next year we'll be going at two meetings in person. Typically, it's a conference every year at one process. Feature there's that. We are members of the Westfield Water Shed. And the line item change that we have right now, we talked about it earlier, Russ brought it up, that we're looking to hire a new conservation coordinator. And what we're asking for is to retain Dennis Clark for a period of time through a mentorship program to get this new person up to speed. We have a couple of applicants that we're forwarding up to the board relatively shortly, I hope. So we'll come down and have a person chosen pretty soon. But that person's going to ultimately assume the salary position that Dennis has. And we want to make sure that we have a smooth transition for the person coming into that job to understand what, what they need to do for this town and its people, right? So we're looking for an increase in that budget to cover the costs of that. I think I'm looking for. Paying between 60 and 100 hours depending upon a lot of things. And then supplies, whatever Jeannie needs in the office, paper.
So that's the boost, any consulting fees?
Yeah. No drone this year, but I'll ask for a drone. Here's one town through the bar to DBW.
Any other questions for the end, man? And we are looking at an MOU to sign between Fish and Game and our police department to give them the statutory powers that Fish and Game has, Environmental Police. They've done it in Ludlow. If, if we do sign the MOU, it would affect North Pond and Lupinski, which are both involve Fish and Game. And hopefully that would assist in if we didn't encounter any problems, you know, because we'd be operating on the same rules as the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, not just our own local bylaws for enforcement.
MOU is?
Memorandum of understanding. So we're working on that because I, I went out originally with everybody in Fish and Game when we had that incident. And it was a very positive thing. Fish and Game is, is working with the town. I mean, it could have turned ugly. Fish and Game Environmental didn't want it to turn ugly and they're working with the town. So we're very grateful for that. And I know there's been a lot of volunteers that have stepped up that said that they're going to help out too. So that helps the taxpayers in terms of.
Yeah, and just, you know, there was, again, that one individual that was doing work over there. And after his education program that we kind of put him through, he's off war coming back and helping to, helping to fix some of the issues that had happened, what he personally caused on his side of the property has already been rectified. So, you know, he made some big steps with him, but, you know, he just, he thought he was doing the right thing. He just didn't know what was right and what was wrong as far as, space like that. So, yeah, we've got plenty of volunteers. We're one happy to go down there and work this out.
Yep. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're getting some, our agriculture.
Morning.
Same, same boat we were in last year, where we're asking for money even though we haven't really spent much money. We will have some expenses this, this next few months through this fiscal year for our farm brochure. For a right to farm flyer. We're supposed to. A more, you know, purchasing homes that we are a right to farm community. And you've got to see tractors around. There's going to be agriculture going on and aware of that. And that's actually part of our bylaw, creating the agcom that we're supposed to implement. People know that, so. And those, some of those will be sort of ongoing expenses. So coming to next year, which is why we're asking for money. Next fiscal year. Also, you know, we have ongoing maintenance at the community garden. As opposed to being replaced or shorted out of the gates. Within $500. Actually, to maintain the well that's there. Last year, we were talking about, oh, it's on a new well. Only about $10,000 to go for a new well. But well's been there for 10 years, so. At some point, we're going to need some maintenance. Then. Promoting and advocating for farmers and agriculture. Getting, doing a lot more with that. We're starting to do more with that, reaching out to other agcoms and other, you know, state agencies. And just want to have, that's why we have some money, because we're going to be consulting line over the expenses that, you know, may come up. With that, we're going to come and see some, you know, creative people, you know, that we need. And we haven't done a lot of that. We want to do more and rather hopefully get some money in that line item. Older budget. Finally, we're really hopeful that, remember, we had tractor rally every spring for five years. We wanted to sort of expand on that and plus we have pandemic, so we've been doing that kind of thing. Hopefully this fall, we're going to expand on that. Have an wholesale farm day that will involve, you know, a map, that's a farmer's school interested participating. Kind of open house that day, educational purposes, promote their products. And then those expenses would play on another level. Very hopeful that's going to happen this year. So then back on the, I got to tell you, back on the main containing the community garden. As the town wants to have a children's garden, part of that, you know, it's a proud, they get child-friendly, mentioned dairy houses. So I don't know if I can really go to the finance committee and ask for, whatever, dairy houses.
I don't even know what that is.
It's off of, it's part of the Sofinowski. Somehow we got, yeah, we got by a lot. Somehow that's kept secret. Yeah, there's 27 plots that are, they're 12 by 24, 20, $20 per one. Pardon, friendly spot. Any questions?
Yeah. And I, I think I asked this last year too. Sofinowski Preserve was under the guardianship of the Conservation Commission. They started this garden.
Right.
Okay, and somehow it got switched over to Ag. But they were paying for this through their funds that they collect. So are the funds that you're now collecting, do you have a revolving account?
We have, it goes into our gift account, I believe. It doesn't actually show up as part of the budget.
No, what I'm saying is, and you know what I'm getting at, Bert, we had funds that would take care of a new well, things like that, that was being collected through the fees with conservation. And now, if, if we need to, I think we probably need to set it up a result revolving account for Ag. So that you can build money to, if you are going to be taking care of this garden, which is under, really under the jurisdiction of conservation, we should probably set up that. And, and, and that's probably something referred to town council. You know, I think it's probably a good idea that Ag's running it because conservation, I think, has way too much to do, you know? We've preserved a lot of land. They got a lot of responsibility, a lot of, and some minor problems that need to be addressed. So I think it's a good idea that we take it over. So I appreciate that.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And I'm not sure that's before my time. That transition, whatever.
Yeah, I, I, I don't even know how it happens. But I think we need to try to address that, you know? Because if we do have expenses before with, with conservation taking care of it through their fees, it didn't go on the tax rule. It didn't become a tax burden, you know, to affect the tax rate. Even though it's a minor amount, all these minor amounts add up, so.
Yeah, by the way, what percentage of the plots are spoken for?
It varies. The last season, it was about half. The season before that, almost all of them. So. We try to get the word out, you know, like, sign it. There's no plaza and Facebook page.
We do have a new administrator. You might want to work with him. Ken is doing a fantastic job. He's, he's working with the town prior. He's working on Channel 15, so.
For the sign, to be clear. Yeah, for the sign.
Yeah, yeah, right, right. So, I mean, it's, use them. And the only other comment I were going to make is because of the cost of fertilizer and the shortage of fertilizer, there's a lot of manure being spread in town. And it has a very distinct odor. And I think that you're probably going to be getting some phone calls. Because my mother-in-law is already yelling at me, so.
Well, when she moved to town, she should have got a pamphlet that this is a right to farm community. I remember when it came in. I mean, it's a great, that's, you know, part that established that. You, you alluded to it, Bert, but when we established the agcom, the, the legislation that was adopted at town meeting says, you're going to smell stuff. You're going to follow tractors. You're going to see some things, right? And.
And I'll, I'll take my shot. He opened it up, so I'll take my shot. I, coming from New Jersey, I didn't think there'd be a problem.
It's a difference, it's a different smell, Mr. Vice Chairman, a different smell, but, you know.
Sorry, Doug.
It's great, you know, it's what makes.
Just smoking, if anybody doesn't know, it's from New Jersey.
So speak slowly. Thank you.
I was just wondering, could CPC be approached from in getting on a well if that's what you need while they have all this money?
Possible.
Possible.
She's saying she's looking for more applications. All the money's there, good one dies, the money might not be there.
I wouldn't do it just for the well, I'd do it for everything. So that it's not a maintenance issue.
Exactly.
It's a restoration or.
Or creation, right.
So you fix fix the fence, fix the signage, fix, uh, everything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have no outstanding books, I'm in good shape.
I got a letter I just sent them.
They stopped charging, they gave everybody a pass.
Library's next. Thank you, Mr. Mish.
Yeah. Did an excellent job.
Excellent job. You should probably announce that you're back at the table, Mr. Chairman.
I'm back at the table as a bincom member. Good morning, how are you today?
Well, you can see in our budget, we kept most of everything the same. The only thing that does have to change at the very bottom is the information materials line. Were required by the state based on our town population size to spend nineteen percent of our municipal appropriated budget on materials. Um, so that would be anything that circulates the patrons for patron use. And then apart from that, I think the only other line, the line that we changed, we do have to plug in the salaries. Because when we calculate that nineteen percent out of the budget, it's out of the total budget, so we have to factor in the salary as well. And we did ask for two changes in the salary line. We asked for an increase for our assistant director, she currently makes twenty four point oh oh nine two an hour. Uh, we requested an increase to twenty seven dollars hourly. Um, and the total amount used to do that would be five thousand six hundred sixty two. We just wanted to make, um, her salary competitive. And so we looked at other towns, we listened to directors that have roughly the same population as us. Uh, we want to make sure that her salary is competitive. Because when we get good people, we want to keep good people, and we want to pay them adequately. And the job responsibilities, as we are getting busier, you know, the job responsibilities, of course.
That's that's basically the personality, and should be addressed just to the personnel who work. But I really need to go into a lot here, that should be addressed with the personnel.
And then the other addition we asked for was, um, we would like to request, um, new part time circulation position uh, for twelve hours a week, um, and July curse our circulation, their salary moves up to fifteen point oh five hourly. So this would be about nine thousand three hundred ninety one dollars and twenty cents annually. And the idea behind this position is, um, we are open till eight. Be required by the state to be open a certain amount of evening hours. So, um, currently, right now, we have three staff working in the evening, but only one of them is positioned at our circulation desk. And, you know, as I've said before, as we're getting busier, it it is getting too much for this one person to handle. So we are hoping to get another person at night to help as well. Our our evening numbers are never the same as daytime numbers, daytime numbers are always the highest. However, during the evening, it's still too much for one person. And anytime we have larger meetings, where we could have hundreds of plenty, sometimes thirty people come in for a meeting who have questions and needs. It just could be too much for one person.
Uh, the trustees have always been very good about monitoring use of the library, number of patrons and trends and different things like that. Have you been able to identify any trends related to the COVID experience that impacted use of the library or number of visits or anything like that?
The the number of people coming in every month is back up or beyond where it was in two thousand nineteen. In two thousand twenty, close for a while, and then get your books to the front door, you know, all those processes. Last month were forty six hundred people use the library.
And there were forty, there were forty six hundred, um, circulations in February. Since, when we look at our history from July twenty twenty one, and I'm looking till the end of February twenty twenty two. Our our circulation numbers have been higher than they've ever been. You know, we we've hit over four thousand almost every month, February in itself for a short month was snow crossings, which is amazing. We hit, um, four thousand six hundred fifty two circulations. And, um, just this year from July to February, we signed up, uh, a hundred new, a hundred and sixty new parts for people. This whole year, when we signed up a hundred and twenty seven from July to June. So it's 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 a marked increase. A lot of new people, a lot of new residents, so so it has been a a huge increase since the the COVID years.
Okay, thank you. One other question, the tree work that you were proposing, is that, are you, uh, looking to go with the lowest bidder there? Is that what the idea was, or?
Uh, that's a question for David, um, I don't know at what point in the project he is, I know he was looking to get some trees removed from the, uh, the side of the building. I think he was going to investigate that as a capital project, unfortunately, I don't have any updates on it.
Alright, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
He's forgetting to have them introduced.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, you're right. Hey folks, we forget we're on Zoom and.
Yeah, please state your name.
Susan Warner.
How are you today?
We're going to request the budget for cultural council. We ourselves level funded for tourism, which is the art show, which by the way is. Of course, we're planning to do that, we're definitely doing it for this year, it's in April, but we plan to do it again in twenty three, which I think is a good question. We do have two other small things, um, COVID has pointed out to us that we do not have a town hall secretary or support staff, never have. Never really needed it, for the most part, we meet once a month. In the winter, we don't typically meet in, um, June, July, August. So we've never had a need for a secretary, COVID has a certain, you know, magnified that. And I really don't know how to go about asking for that kind of support staff, I have absolutely no idea how much money to ask for to do that.
That that's already been projected into the budget by the C A O. Because we're going to be addressing all the, uh, boards and commissions that do not have secretary. It would be filled by a floater that would do the night meetings, you know, to help set up the Zoom and to also take care of the minute. So that's that's already being projected into the budget as a proposal.
Perfect, thank you. And one other thing I'd like to just question, or just ask a rest, I should say. Is Southwood Cultural Council for the past three or four years, and and we were we planned to do it as well as partnering with the Southwood Rotary Club on the annual summer concert series at Wally Park. It's been going really well, but we plan to do it for two thousand twenty two and and twenty three. Um, the question has come up from Southwood Rotary, what is the rental fee for Wally Park? And there really isn't a, has a, to my knowledge, a finite answer on that right now. And then what we're just sort of asking the question is, Southwood Cultural Council partnering with Southwood Rotary. Could we request a discount on that rental fee, no matter what it is? Because we are a town board creating this town event, and if so, what what would that be? There's something we could do to ease the financial burden, to continue this park, um, concert series. Right now, we are seven concerts in July and August, every Wednesday. They're free because it's partnered with Cultural Council, some of the music is funded by the state of Massachusetts, you know, through Southwood Cultural Council. Some of it is funded by sponsors, but it's, um, basically seven evenings, Wednesdays, July and August, six o'clock to nine o'clock at Wally Park.
So they, the, if I can field the question, I think Park and Rec.
I think you ought to state before you field is that we are a membership, have a membership in Rotary.
So, so, yeah.
Full collector are
Oh, yes.
Are corporate members of Rotary, so, but Park and Rec, the director, they just came in front of us a couple of weeks ago, and I I know I had spoken to her also. They're establishing some new rates for to rent the pavilion for the day, that kind of thing. But certainly, it would be worth having a meeting with Park and Rec as a board or commission to discuss exactly what you're proposing and come up with an equitable solution to that issue. Because it does make sense what you're proposing, it just probably just needs to be hashed out with them because they're the controlling entity of Wally.
So I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, in in the cultural council budget maybe going into twenty twenty three, could we add that as a line item instead of, if you look at our, it's just always been art show. And this might be an additional event that we plan to, you know, do annually that we hadn't before.
I don't, I don't see a reason why not, I mean, the.
And if so, but I would probably like to amend this budget going into twenty three, if I knew that number, but I don't right now.
My my opinion, it's just like when cultural council or some organization puts on something at town hall and a town board or commission sponsors it, there is no charge.
Okay.
So, in my opinion, Wally Park is a public park operated by the town of Southwood. My feeling, should not be a charge, you're a town board sponsoring something up there, but
Right.
But they are elected officials. But that's my opinion.
And in fact, it becomes a transfer of funds from one budget to another within the town, it's almost, you know.
Right.
Waste of time, but.
Right.
But is that concert series, uh, are you proposing that, or is there one already?
It's been, it's been established, this will be our fourth year.
Is there any revenue opportunity in that concert series for like a vendor or anything?
Yes, yes, um, with the, well, not through cultural council, but through Rotary, yes. If a vendor wanted to, uh, bring in a boot truck, for example, uh, Rotary is looking for people to bring in their boot truck. And the boot truck, it's a a percentage of like, I don't know, of sales code is like, goes to Rotary, but the rest of it would all be to the individual vendor, that's good.
Question about, so is your, um, art exhibit is only two days a year.
Yes.
And and that's your twenty five hundred dollar.
For advertising budget and operational cost, yes.
And, um, and and so does that include like an offset from the fees that the vendors, do they, you know?
Yeah. Okay, so. Well, maybe I'm not sure if I understand your question.
Well, so you have how many, uh, artists, about forty five artists, do they all pay ten dollars for their booth?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So the advertising fees, is that the majority of your?
That is.
Have you guys leveraged, you know, the town, uh, advertising capabilities now that you mentioned Ken is in place or?
Yeah, yes, yes, we just, uh, print advertising alone. What was it? I I don't, I didn't bring that with me, but which is. I think it was somewhere, it was somewhere Christine Heather, just for the print portion of it, not not withstanding, um, you know, some of the other, uh, virtual advertising, it's it's just, that's how much it costs. I got it broken, not broken down, I did a good job on that, I don't have a good.
Yeah.
But yeah, yeah. Okay, um, and then, yeah, that's what I'm saying, if if we were to add this annual concert series to our budget, it might be just a matter of moving money from one board to another, but we plan to continue to do it.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time. Thank you. Cemetery.
Best people to let me down.
Good morning. Ed Row. The cemetery. How are you today? Everything doing exciting?
I think they did say it softly.
So what are we looking at that's new this year?
Well, summary, what we're, we're staying within our budget, we're moving some things around. Lessons that we've learned over the last couple of years. And one of the things that, uh, major thing that we've done is is that we've done burials throughout the winter. So we did a total of sixteen, uh, fourteen of them were for burial, still on the prenations. And actually, that's working out real well because some of the funeral home directors thanked us so much for doing that. Where we're, what we like to do is we're moving some money around so that we can change our employee budget. So that our main employee, uh, that we still a lot of work in the cemetery, as well as making it so people witness and all that. And well as taking care of the burials during the winter. To go from a twenty hour week to a thirty hour week and to increase the, uh, from being a seasonal to a full time employee. Because there is a lot of work to do other than just plowing the grass and trimming. So when there's, uh, for example, one of the things that's happening in the cemetery that doesn't happen anywhere else, this is that a lot of flat markers, they sink it to the ground, they raise them and get them flush. Private headstones that are leaning or falling over. Pairing molds. So it's a, it's it's quite a value added to our residents and to the cemetery. As well as the cemetery probably looks better than it ever has. And, uh, my opinion, with the staff that we have, we had a couple more like that, we could probably sell a whole hunger. The big thing is, is that we've got new sections. We have in there the capital improvements about getting paid, particularly got new section eight, it's almost full already. And so instead of getting all mud and then it's potholes and tiny holes and all that. Like to get that taken care of. As well as the, uh, if the surveyor to finish the survey of the cemetery, so that we can foster ourselves to have, uh, that online if we're applying graves. It's one stigma that to be listed, stuff we need to have available and, uh, also, uh, tremendous amount of work in progress as far as cemetery records, getting that stuff documented. To prevent any, uh, issues that happened in the past where there's been some lawsuits to the town, people were burying the right places. So we're, we're doing a tremendous amount of work of moving along with that issue. That those things, the errors of the past don't happen in the future.
Uh, I'm just, I'm maybe confused on the budget, so the twenty two budget was twenty nine seven fifty. And twenty three proposed is forty six nine.
Yeah, because what we're doing is, is that we're, we're, um, because of, of the employee posture, moving like. employee posture, moving one of the other councils and had maintenance, that we're doing a lot of maintenance in-house now instead of outsourcing it.
So that That's all new proposed?
It's just a modification to what we've been doing in the past.
Which will, will take effect in twenty-three?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't
And then, an operation about adding a line item for miscellaneous supplies such as, you know, supporting Spirit Walk. We'll have a better job with that with historical mission and those that maybe and those that come and visit to get that cemetery going Spirit Walk.
What's, what's this, the new employee going to be turned during the winter?
Over, going to overhaul the equipment, very good, well, prepared for the and for the spring, as well as keeping the cemetery open. And then also too, we've got a lot of replacing markers, identifying the rows and sections so that we can find the grave. So there's a lot of work that has to be accomplished there, as well as doing winter burials. Let's say if a burial's happened, it lost it over the blanket and the generator, he hit the ground so that the digger can come in and mound it.
That's a three-day process.
Do we charge more for winter burials?
We didn't this year because we didn't know what our cost was going to be, so we're kind of playing with that figure.
For next year.
We're not, we're not going to raise it too much because, you know, it's coming from the family. But we could probably add a couple hundred bucks for that, just to absorb somewhat some of it. And not, I'm not sure where that goes, why not even that money would go back into your general fund or does it go back to us?
Because I don't think you have a revolving account other than for perpetual care. So we'd have to
You've never touched that perpetual
Yeah, we have to
I have no idea that it even exists.
We'd have to do some research on that one. But also anytime it has been a rule with the finance committee and select board, I guess when a new employee is, is proposed, in this case, we're creating employee with benefits and retirement, the whole thing, that we'd have to calculate those costs out, you know, to get a true understanding.
Kept the money in the budget for the salary for that position, but we totally forgot about the benefit packet. We just got told that like two weeks ago, so we're
Yeah. And, and I, I, boy, you know, I hear you, but I'm, I'm looking at a winter in a cemetery, if it's covered with snow.
We still shoveled it, we shoveled a forty by forty spot for a grave to get that grave buried. So it's still a lot of work.
I, I, I'm just playing devil's advocate, you know, if we don't have any burials going on, it's, it's winter time and
Well, over the last ten years, we've probably had anywhere from fifteen to twenty burial in winter.
And in addition, as is that, that individual will be able to work cemetery records.
Okay, alright, that's what I'm getting at.
There's grading that needs to be done, but you can't throw it all at them at once.
I, I think it'd be good if you laid out a detailed job description of what exactly this individual would be doing. Especially, you know,
In the off-season.
Yeah, in the off-season, that's, that's, I think, the big question for me.
And the supervision of also.
Yeah, that's a good question. If somebody's working in the winter by themselves, they need to be supervised.
Are we talking about a fifteen-year-old or are we talking about a thirty-year-old?
We're talking about somebody that would take the responsibility of checking in of, on their progress.
He would fall under the sexton, so the sexton is on the phone with that person like daily. So that, that person's job would fall under the sexton.
Right.
For me to be physically there watching him work during the winter.
No, 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 never suggested that, when my point is, is that I've worked many winters and twiddled my thumbs enough, you know, that you just need to have somebody, if the sexton is the one to do it, then that's fine.
I didn't understand his question.
Yeah.
This might be a stretch, but some of these items like, you know, improvements, new roof, survey, I wonder if the CPC is, is
Well, Community Preservation, they've got a lot of historical money to restore, but
In the old cemetery.
But, but, but you can't use monies for maintenance, but if it was something new, like a restoration?
Well, there's new roof, sixteen thousand dollars. That sounds new.
It, it sounds new to me too.
Whoa, was only sixty-five hundred, but he didn't include the prevailing wage, so we just added what we thought the, I think it's thirty percent or something maybe for prevailing wage, so we added that to that total because we didn't have enough money to do.
I mean, sometimes you don't think about it unless you put it out there.
And also tiered and stuff, we want gutters, because there's no gutters, not what happens, there's water leaks into the garage and into the office.
And it's already doing that, so.
Did, did you already do some paving, didn't we put some money in, in previous years to begin the paving project?
No, we did the, the road, it's just a dirt road, then put some crushed gravel.
Okay, so we never actually started that?
We haven't started.
Because we, weren't we talking about doing this over like a three-year plan?
Yes, and we got the first stage done about as far as laying all of the road that's been surveyed and the, and the hard package that's down on the road. It's been paving that musical complex.
Okay.
I, I got a question on capital, when, if we're at that point?
I think we're at that point.
Okay, um, now, and I think I'm reading this right, the survey, the old part of the cemetery, the budget was for ten thousand for the year that we're currently in and, and zero money has been spent.
Right, that's, that's for the, not the old cemetery.
Well, it says, survey old part of, or
Yeah, that's what I'm going to know.
New cemetery.
Terry, that's on the northwest section and the new cemetery. They, they, they call it the old cemetery for some reason.
Whatever, not, not the point. The question is, is there's ten thousand dollars budgeted as of the twenty-third of February, zero had been spent? And then you're asking for an additional ten thousand for this budget, is that twenty thousand dollars total to be spent? Or is that just ten thousand dollars that you're looking to spend?
Just ten thousand.
So, okay, so you have not spent the ten thousand that was budgeted for last year, for the year we're currently in? And you want to, you don't need to budget for next year if you, the total cost is only ten thousand, not twenty thousand?
What we're looking for is ten thousand, not twenty thousand.
Okay.
So you already have, have money.
So you're saying the money that was in the budget last year that we didn't spend, because I didn't know it was there, but because we didn't spend it, we're just asking to keep that in the budget?
You can spend it before June thirtieth. You can do your survey.
Added ten thousand.
Right, that's right. So your budget just became thirty-six.
Period over so we can do it in case, so you're saying the money's there now?
The money's there now, so, but you got to June thirtieth to expend that money and have the surveying done.
So then that one can get taken on. Yep, we misunderstood.
Good catch, Terry.
What I do.
All right, you get the big bucks.
Right.
So we just did section eight, nine, and ten. Eight is, I'm just about, I have about probably thirty, maybe thirty-eight spots left in eight to sell. And then that one's filled up, and we just got that one in August survey. So that's, hasn't even been like six, seven months, and that one's pretty much, by June, it should probably be filled. So then we have nine and ten, which are pretty big, and then we have a flat area that's next to eight, nine, and ten. We prob, it'll be a little smaller, but we could probably, once we try to get rid of, we tried to get rid of the sand pit, if we can get rid of that big sand pit, then that would level out and we'd have three more sections, but after that, we're full. We have no land anywhere.
What is that, two hundred, five hundred, six hundred? Ballpark.
Those three sections, those are going to be smaller because it's not that wide, so I would probably say maybe another five, six hundred places. And then you're going to be full.
Have you looked at, and I'm just throwing this out since, since it came up, I mean, the property adjacent in between both cemeteries is coming for sale?
The one, the woodpile in the back?
The Johnson property.
Oh, that one, oh yeah, that would be perfect.
I, you know, I'm just throwing it out there that and then the other thing is cremation seemed to be the way a lot of people are going. And I know at certain cemeteries that establish
Yeah.
It's rather than take up a lot of land, certain areas just for ashes to go in some sort of
Previously, they would say, they would say, oh, we can only put, if you buy a full lot, that's four hundred and fifty dollars for a four-by-eight lot. That puts a full body. Previously, they said, we, we would only put two cremations there. Now, we've changed that, I can fit six in a vault. So if I can fit six on top of there, that family's not spending money buying all these big lots for just a small little cremation jar. So that's saving people money and it's saving us space, because now you can put a whole family on top of one body if you wanted to. So that's, that's the option we changed. If we only put two there, that's fine, but we have the option to put six on top of a, a full body, so that's seven people that could go in one spot. And that's not wait, that's saving space. So with some, it's a generation, finding it's a generation thing, the older people don't fund community as much as you think they do. So they're still coming and buying the lots for a full body, but then they're saying, hey, can my kids come and be on top years later? Absolutely, it's, 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 you know, that's what we're doing.
That'd be disrespectful, but is there a double occupancy option or should there be?
Double as in two people, no, we can't do top to top, the bottom.
Why is that?
Because we'd have to dig a lot bit, because it, the vault itself is at like a four-foot high vault, and that goes in a six-foot grave. So that would, we'd have to dig down, so you'd have to get me some more equipment. We're not going to find somebody that's going to drive a huge I think it would be a big, big backhoe type of thing to go down, you're talking going down twenty-seven feet.
Who digs the grave down?
Carl from Westfield.
Private contractor?
Yeah, from Lance Enterprise, he does the digging. We don't have the equipment, I mean, that's always a future thing, if we get equipment.
We went through that before.
Yeah.
You're better off with contracts.
It's easier just to call the digger and he comes and he, he schedules it out and he digs for like
And it's his equipment, his problem.
And we were the only ones, he told me that buried through the winter, so he kept them busy, he was happy.
By no close the wrong dig.
Yeah.
They do burial throughout the winter.
Yeah. They didn't have any to.
Have we looked at, I'm sorry, have we looked at having a, you know, building up? I've, I've seen in some larger cemeteries where they've done cremations, there's actually, I don't even know what you'd call it, a mole
Wall, mausoleum?
Maybe, I don't know, but there's like, I mean, I hate to equate it to it, but like a locker type of you know, it's, it's in a, it's not even, it's an outside building. I picture in my, my uncles back in Michigan, where you, they put them in a, you know, they, they could be six high, seven high, but they're in a, you know, in a, a wall kind of looking structure.
We have, we have, so if you do, if you're just buying a cremation lot, it's two hundred and fifty dollars for a cremation lot, which is like, I think it's a two-by
Five brick.
Like, two by what, two, two by four or something foot wide? And then the stone goes right on top of the people that we put in the ground, and that, that lot is only two people can go in there. We have a section five that has, what would you say the backside of that is? Hundred feet, hundred fifty feet, something like that. So we have a section that we could use and designate just for flat stones and cremations. So we have a whole section that we haven't even used yet further down, it's part of the beginning of five, but the beginning of five is full burials and it's a mixture of everything, but they're only flat stone. So we have that whole section we could do just for that, and that would be
Ever like to estimate how many years of capacity you have, sounds like you've got plenty and
For that, yeah.
And, and as cremations tend to accelerate for the next generation, so I would say that it's a problem that's not on the table right now.
But looking to get a property in advance and just buy the property for the future now, instead of waiting ten years or five years or whatever, that would, might be something on the table books, I don't do, I don't do that buying, you do?
That might be something that could be a community preservation, preserving a historical building and
Right, and then it would connect both
And preserving, right, you know, and protect that whole area.
Right. So that's something to look at.
Because it's, it's, it's listed as an ancient burial grounds
What is?
On all the maps.
Really? That property?
That, that whole area.
I'll have to get a little family. Let's see if, yeah.
I'm just throwing it out.
So if we found out, what, what do we, how do you, that process work?
I think you could work with the C A O and begin the process.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I don't have an account as to, isn't it for future? But other money they have.
Yeah, well, and I'm sure the same thing for displacement. Yeah, right, I'm sure that's what that is, part of it. A pile of sand that's there.
So the pile, when he digs a hole, he puts a pile in the front?
I was being kind, I said displacement, yes.
So some of that, we've been able to, Crespi, when he did the new section and did the road, made the road for us, he used a lot of that sand to fill in what he needed instead of buying it and charging us, so he used a good portion of that, but we need to get rid of that pile. Some of that can be used to flatten it out on the other three sections that I said is there. So some of it can be used that, and then we'll just throw topsoil on top of that and make it good, just expand, expand some of the land that we have, but we don't need that huge pile, and I just wanted out of there, I almost had it done, but somebody said no. I don't know if the town can come remove that or if we can hide it somewhere.
You want, you might want to raise up an area somewhere, I wouldn't necessarily get rid of it in the earth.
Well, then can we, but that's what I'm saying, we'll use part of that to, to raise up.
Sand, sand fill is pretty valuable these days.
Right, but can we put it somewhere else, is what I'm saying, store it somewhere else, you know what I mean? Yeah, just to get it out of our way so we can start working on that and leveling it over the years, you need a packet. So can't do it with that in the wind. It's got to be a farm or something, you can throw it on for a while.
Price of moving it.
Yeah, well, that's the other thing.
Yeah, you want to move it once.
It's not Title V scene, so it's not like somebody's going to, the expense of saying that we could sell. We're not in the business of selling what, sand, you know?
Okay. Any other questions for these folks?
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Have a good day.
He's there, Building Department?
Yes, yeah.
Morning. You state your name for the record.
Kyle Scott, Building Commissioner for Southwick. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So it's a pretty simple budget, much like last year and pretty much the year before. A little, little trimming done on lines that were kind of heavy and not needed. Revenue has been going up because of the increased fees that were kind of out of date with other communities, so revenue has been quite a lot healthier.
Anyone have any questions for the young man? How many new house building permits have we seen in the last year?
On average, I've got twenty five, since I started, uh, it's going to be two years in June. Um, I've had an average of twenty five at a time. Um, twenty five to as much thirty, and as soon as a couple gets C O S certificate of occupancies, I get two or three more. So, uh, it's quite, quite a flow.
Any questions, Mr. Fox?
No, I think Kyle's been doing a, uh, a very good job. Uh, he's addressed our, uh, uh, fees that we, uh, uh, charge to bring them up to date. Uh, so, um, he's doing a good job there. Uh, I, I think, and Kyle, you can add to this. The E permitting process is going smoothly.
Oh, yeah, uh, it's really, uh, really an asset to the town. It, uh, it allows us to make sure everybody's up to date on taxes, not too far behind, so permits aren't issued, uh, you know, in error. And, um, yeah, it's definitely a great tracking method. The inspectors work great with it. Um, so everything gets logged and recorded and very easy to see if somebody is working without a permit also. I can be out, out on the, in the field either. I could use a tablet or just call back to the secretary and have her run an address. It works, it works really great.
This also benefits the assessors department.
Yeah, it's, uh, it actually added a lot, um, because she'll print out, she knows access to all permits that are supposed to be there. So when she starts out, does her rounds.
I ask them. I, I contact the assessors too. Every time there's a final. Um, normally fire department and I will go out on a new house. And then the assessor is usually right there because what we do is I have the secretary contact the assessors to let them know on this date and time, there's going to be a final inspection, so they can do a walkthrough and measure and get the tax record correct.
Otherwise they can't get in there a lot of times, so.
Right, it's, right. So it's a much neater process and a fairer process.
What you'll notice is that as soon as they put a cellar hole in, they start taxing. Okay, so sometimes they'll throw a cellar hole and not have a permit yet. Well, she doesn't care because she's already punched the card on it, their pension. If they had a permit, not. It's just nature of the beast, so, but a lot of stuff that used to slip by years ago because, because of paper. Now there is not, she can print everything out, it's absolutely current. She goes out, it's like, bang, they're on the tax walls and that reflected and you saw the increase. So, and that's, that's, that's exactly what that electronic stuff has done for us. It's, it's, it's made us a lot of money. Cost was starting off.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. I recall finishing my building. The building inspector was driving out and the assessor was driving in. Literally in a goddamn driveway. Really? Really?
Welcome to America.
Yeah, very tight. I'm not complaining, just.
Did you get a letter about the right to farm?
I did not get a letter about the right to farm. That took me two years for the right to farm, by the way. Let's not go down that road, please. Any other questions? All right, we're all set. Thank you.
All right, thanks Kyle. Thank you.
Building inspector, then a break, then more at nine twenty.
Break is.
We're running right on time.
All right, welcome back. We'll continue on after break. Up next is Board of Health. Do you folks could state your name for the record? I'd appreciate it. Yep, thank you. Thank you, Tom. I sue, thank you. Good morning, folks.
Could you just introduce yourself?
We, we agreed in principle on that number.
Candidate who is qualified or will be qualified, takes a few more courses, um, and it's already in his proposal, he's already asked for more than seventy thousand. Also secretary, we need more than five hours a week for secretary, so we asked that we can take, um, two thousand out of our nursing budget and put it to the secretary. And maybe have another nineteen hundred added to, uh, based on. But we are keeping something in there. And because of, um, secretary is going to be busy when she gets now that Tammy and Kyle ten to fifteen hours a week more before Tammy left.
You did finally, you, you did get a secretary, correct? Okay, great, great. Oh, wonderful. Wonderful. Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
There seems to have been an upward pressure for salaries, uh, related to COVID across a number of, uh, occupations and work situations. Every department, pretty much, you're going to see an upward trend in people. And we can fill the position. So my question is there, is there any funding available to the town, to any of the federal programs that would help offset the, even a year's worth of salary? Uh, I know some of the language from the, uh, the government, uh, programs, it's been pretty broadly worded. In order to help cover expenses related to COVID. And I didn't know if there was some way we could translate the upward pressure, this particular situation on salaries, which I think we've seen. Uh, I don't have the particulars, but the general conversation seems to, over the last two years, it's been a pretty significant change. I would just ask that, uh, you guys check that out.
Sure.
Because again, I've read different language, sounds like it might be supportive of helping to offset at least a year's worth of salary or part of it. Yeah, I know us as a board looking at it in the past, we didn't want to really go that route because although it's a Band-Aid today to help offset it, next year it's not. And it's a, you know, it's a double whammy, right? Because you didn't have it in for the second year. So, and we're, we're, we're not, it's all good. But yeah, we, we have looked at that somewhat. And I'll ask Mr. Steinhardt, if there's anything else out there he could look for. The nursing. Definitely helps, yeah. Right, and that's a three-year grant? It's renewable every year. Understood.
And just to reiterate, do you have one viable candidate?
Yeah.
Right now, and yes.
Plus things like, um, cars, phones, stipends.
The C A O is working with it. It's kind of, we're a board in transition. We're very thankful that Tommy is, is come back to help us out and he's going to stay on until this individual is only going to be like a thirty hour a week, I believe, until he gets his masters. Uh, so Tommy will be able to assist, uh, uh, for those extra hours and then also mentor this individual because there's certain things like, uh, the title, uh, Title V inspections.
Certification for soil.
Okay, so, uh, we're thankful for Tommy for doing that, but, but the C A O is working and will work with your board. Uh, you know, uh, as far as, uh, uh, helping finalize a contract and and hopefully, uh, the individual will be here for more than a year. And, uh, and I'm, I'm sure that, I know that he submitted a, a boilerplate contract that he must have got from somebody else, that it isn't, uh, uh, his. And C A O will be analyzing that and going over with it.
Haven't voted to hire him yet.
Right, right.
And is that comparable to other towns, uh, positions that are, you know, our size? Probably less. Well, do we know?
Well, they're really all over the place. It's really hard to, if you mean, uh, comparable salaries.
Yeah, like for a town our size, I noticed.
Well, that's, that's really hard to compare, um, but it's, I would say eleven, thirteen, ten, historically it's been lower.
Yeah. Health director that we had for, oh, not quite two years. Left because, because of that. You know, there's places that are offering more.
Oh, absolutely there is, yeah.
So, no doubt, it's, some of it's anecdotal until you find out a, with regard to our population, you know, in Massachusetts, the average salary for that position is X. No, and you can't compare us to ag law in the west.
You also can't compare it in the sense that, uh, if, if you're a sole person in a department versus another department that has two people or three people, so they don't have the same demands that this department does. There's no backup. That's it. So, um, sometimes it's hard to compare other towns if they have no.
It doesn't matter, I think, whether the towns are operating, because we'll take it or leave it. You're offering me this, I'll go elsewhere, I'll find a good place and office anymore. And you don't have, you don't have any, there's nobody out there.
We're operating from a weak position right now, with, with a lot of, uh, different things. But we ha, we are doing comparisons. I mean, we're, we're trying to do our due diligence.
So how do you know, um, for a secretary that you've granted X amount of work for her? Do you let us know or does that go town meeting to vote on? How do we?
Yeah, the end is still town meeting that votes on all of this in the end, yeah.
But you put a proposal in, correct?
Yep.
So how will we, when will we know whether you for ten hours a week?
Not, not until town meeting accepts it, but, but I mean. We will be, after we do our hearings, then the select board does their discussion, finance committee does their discussion. Then we normally meet together to see if we can't come up with something agreeable to both boards. And that is what we present to the town meeting. Okay, so at that point you would know.
Just as a little caveat. We are in a little permitting issue with food permits right now. If she goes beyond the five hours for the board health, could she do the other hours as a vote?
I will, I'll take care of that with Carl.
Right.
This week. We'll make it work. That's what you need to hear, right?
That's what I need to hear.
Because we want those permits dealt with. We want all that cleaned up. So we will not stop that. All right.
Are there any questions?
No, thank you. Very difficult year.
Thank you.
And more to come.
Right. Thank you.
Building and grounds. I don't see anyone here today. We'll move on. Oh, yeah.
Trying to remember all the exact exits from this building.
Yeah, the window's pretty much the easiest one.
That's too high for me.
Your name, sir?
David Sutton, Building and Grounds. Before we get started, there's something I wanted to quickly bring up, and that was the, uh, two people in this building who are building the grounds. Larry Bender and Hillary, um, Fielding. Transitioning into this position has been a breeze because of those two individuals. I just wanted to let you know how lucky we are to have them. Unbelievable. Most of this stuff I have no clue about. If it wasn't for them, you would be throwing me out the window. It doesn't help. That's okay.
It will when we're done.
And we have two unbelievable people that'll fix it. No, they do a great job. They really have, yeah.
Been mine, I'm probably two and a half years old here.
Yeah.
The building department one?
Way back.
Might have been a misfire.
There was, yes.
Just so you know.
You did, there was. Underbuilding inspector.
Building inspector. And there might have been some budget for this.
Yeah, the police. Public safety. Yep.
What do you want to start with, sir?
I would start with anything you saw a big change, David. I wouldn't, anything that's the same, don't worry about.
Yeah, Tom, Tom looks.
That was the, uh, the field replenishment account that I wanted to start. One of the things that I found that the building inspectors over there was that, there's no materials anywhere to replenish things until it becomes a serious problem. So experiencing right now. We have a lot of work going on at the baseball field to bring it back up to a double A field. And if the materials would have been there, I think that we would have definitely been a wrath. So by having these, these materials consisting of sands and looms and trap rock and, you know, trap dust and things to keep the mud and stuff at bay. Go a long way to keep it up and becoming what it did.
I think we have a solution for the sand.
Yeah.
Well, unfortunately, the, uh, the sand that they talked about is a delicate blend.
Right.
It's a blend of different sands, clays, and things along those lines, so I'm sure it was, I think, it'd be great. But, you know, I've been doing a lot of research and studying, and we've got a game plan over the last couple of weeks, and we've got the old days, and we managed to get it back now, to have that field put back into the condition it was when we got it, and now look to have the high schools start playing their first home game there. That's a good place to start off, so that'll be a good show-off point, because we know what happens in the fall, all the college start looking for high school players, and they see this field and go look at this thing, and maybe we should play some games here. Put that part on. So that's, that's the, that's the only one I have for, uh, for that. I was thinking of like four thousand dollars. Four or five thousand.
Five thousand.
Five thousand, thanks. We're rebuilding a special containment with materials that we have. I'm a, I'm a scrounger, and I manage to find everything I need, pitch around these properties to build what I want over there. Sand has to be properly taken care of, otherwise, you lose it, it'll be absolutely zero, no good. Stuff we put into an area protected, so it'll always be ready.
David, it's Terry Mish speaking, um, that's, uh, I've been, uh, over, huh, yeah, I've been a little sick last few days here, but I want to, maybe Monday, Tuesday next week, we can go up and take a look and see, um, what those fields are looking like. You want to give me a call?
No, we can get you out there. We have the, the, the pitchers mound and the, uh, home base and all the pits around each one of the bases, uh, will be under construction over the next couple of weeks to run up the pot. Or you'd be, yeah, car, car, bring up the car.
Okay, anything else?
For parts away.
Yeah, that's big, nothing. What's next, then?
Town complex. The, uh, the two items that I have on the town complex are a, uh, ride-on mower, the attachments, and some media improvements. During the time of tenure, as, as working with these guys here, there's a lot to take care of, as far as walkways and snow cleaning and all that. We have a couple of twenty-two-inch snow blowers that about run their capacity out. They're out there for hours and hours and hours keeping it clear, but we have a little race going on here between us and the guy with plows. The only place we get to put the snow is in the driveway, but they get to it before us, we're, we're, we're in deep doo-doo, because then I end up having to wait till the next day, they get D P W to come out and do piles, and it happened to me once already, and that'll never happen again. But these guys are really, really working their heart out, and this piece of equipment here has a fifty-two-inch snow blower and a forty-eight-inch plow, and we had that six inches of slush, I was wondering who's gonna have the heart attack first, in moving it, because the snow blower wouldn't touch it, uh, we busted the snow blower over at the library trying to move it, and, uh, we don't have a plow, we don't have a tractor, we don't have anything that we can get to do it ourselves. This piece of equipment will take a lot of burden, not to mention we leave a lot of the overtime, because it'll cut down the amount of time we spend with each storm, and somebody might not have a heart attack, not that I'm saying this may. Oh, but it, it goes a long way, so those two pieces of equipment. On top of that, because now we're bringing so much stuff back to in-house, uh, I noticed there's a lot of stuff that everybody else is doing, we can do, and we're gonna start doing that, and this piece of equipment I can use all year long. There's a lot of things around the, around the grounds and all that that, you know, we can do duplication, we can take care of, we can move left and right, uh, we have, I found a trailer and a pile over there, I'm gonna put a new axle, some wheels on it, and, uh, we're gonna start doing things like that, this tractor will help in that, so it's a year-round piece of equipment, that tractor, you know, mower.
Where do you plan on storing it?
We, uh, over here, we have the old doghouse, and, uh.
It'll fit in there.
Right.
It'll fit in there.
Yeah, it's got a little garage door, and it's perfect. We're doing some cleaning up over there, straightening some things, and found new places to start storing stuff. We got stuff spread all around the complexes that we have, and, uh, that's gonna be a new battle, but that won't happen next year. If I can get it all centrally located, I can get this stuff on a maintenance program, sort of equipment that lasts longer, because right now, it just, it's everywhere. I've spent half the time going and collecting it, bring it back to get it ready, and put it back where it was, it's in the way of somebody here, it's in the way of somebody over there. I can do that.
Next after we'll negate your need for a twenty-two-inch.
Yeah, well, we're gonna, we're still gonna have a need for the smaller snow blowers in order to clean up the smaller areas, this won't fit, but most of the walkways, this'll be a one-pass deal, you know, you run it right down, it's done. Even with the snow blower, you're out there for an hour and a half, two hours, cleaning everything up. You know, it's not like your yard where you, you know, you go out there and you give it a quick hit, and you're, ah, you know, I wait till more falls and get it out of there. We have to take into consideration that there may be three guys running into that building, we jump on a fire truck and go somewhere, and I don't, I, I can't have them worried about something falling, so we're constantly adding, adding, adding. This would definitely fill that need.
I, I know you don't, but, so you don't technically send out the, the plower to do your stuff, you rely on D P W to send that person out?
I have no control over that. It used to be, but now it was moved to D P W. The, uh, the plowing of the ground used to belong to building and ground, but because of circumstances and events, it was moved to D P W, where Randy takes care of it, and these guys come in, and like anybody, they're getting paid by the job, they knock it off and get on to the next one.
Oh, understood, yeah.
Then I have to, guys, I tear one of their guys away from somebody, or wait till they're free, and then I can get someplace that I, if I had a piece of equipment, I can probably get most of it done myself.
Yeah. And police and fire are the same way, that they're not, they don't dictate when those guys come out, D P W does, yeah.
And if I don't keep, you know, this guy's a police department, one of those guys slips and falls, remember, there aren't.
Yeah, they are.
Fake.
Some. Yeah, it's not even.
Dave, are you sure that that tractor you're looking for is heavy enough?
Yes, I checked and checked and double-checked. It's the biggest I can get, but anyway, I want to do outside of farm tractor, and the reason why this particular model was picked was it had the right-sized motor and the right-sized wheelbase and size of tires. And it also comes complete with the chains and tire weights.
So it's two-wheel drive?
Yes, it's two-wheel drive. But that, that, that's the big thing about the weights. Like I said, it's the best thing I could possibly get outside of getting a tractor.
Is this kind of comparable to the John Deere, the school uses over there? I know you see them, they've got a John Deere tractor with a fully enclosed cap and a big blower, he sits up and down the sidewalks. I'm on Arx thing, and I have a John Deere high house with the same sized blower. The blower's thirty-five hundred dollars, it, it just seemed, I don't begrudge you wanting to get it, but it, it, it just doesn't seem like enough money for the vehicle that you'd want to buy, that, that stuff's expensive. It does a great job, but I, I, are you sure seven thousand dollars is enough for what you're gonna need?
Kind of a piece of equipment it is, and what it's gonna be doing, it's a perfect fit. You know, I'm, I'm tend to see to be on the cheap side. I don't want to buy something that's gonna be too big for what I'm trying to do, and, and I don't want to spend money foolishly either.
Right, well, I don't.
Quality.
I think, I think hate when we buy stuff, and then you're sitting here three years later, and things pile and jump out of backyard, what you should have asked for what you really needed and bought it, it's money well spent, but we've seen that too often, so everybody takes a little bit, and you're constantly going over the same thing, why don't you just go on. I, I just want to make sure that that's, that's what you need, and that's, that's why I have a cover.
It goes to Husqvarna for, for a couple of reasons. One of the big reasons being that I can buy it local.
Yeah.
One of my goals is to try and get, if I'm gonna be getting something, and it's, and it's within the range numbers, I like to use people from our town, instead of transferring it to some of the backdoor community, so that dealer happened to be here, which is good. It had the right motor, and it had the right reputation for the motor, and a laser Z, which a laser Z made by X mark, and everybody says, X mark, that's a great piece of equipment to have, but what they didn't tell you is that you've got the twenty-three pound socket, you've got to inspect the shaft wall. That's exactly what happened to mine. My seven-thousand-dollar mower, after ten years, started going down the toilet. I've learned, be careful of what you get and when you get it.
All right, well, we, we'd be the devil's advocate. How, how, how long would you expect that to last, Will?
As long as it's properly taken care of.
What's the H P on it?
Right.
How much is the H P on it?
Twenty-three. If, if. My, my E M I tractor at home is, is only eighteen horsepower.
Is it gas or diesel?
It's gas. It's, uh, it's, it might, it's eighteen horsepower, and it does its job because it's used in the right way. Like anything, this, this is the same thing. I'm not gonna try and put something too big for it to handle, and it'll come out of what it needs, so we're gonna take care of it.
David, do, are we still using the whacker from the D P W to do the, the front sidewalks and things like that?
Yeah, they're taking care of the front sidewalk.
Okay.
As far as.
So I mean, if we needed a heavier piece of equipment, we have one available to us.
I talked with Mr. Brown about that, about, since he borrowed some equipment.
Well, that's why, one of the reasons why we bought that piece of equipment was to help out with town hall, fire, police, and library, so I, I hope that we are borrowing it when necessary, you know?
The time, I, I don't know what their schedule is on that, but I know that generally when it's no cleaning time, it's being used, and I'll have to wait until they're done.
Yeah.
Before I get it.
Well, I.
I don't have time to wait.
Well, my understanding is, they don't put somebody into that whacker until after they're done clearing the roads, so it might be a case where we could use it first, and they could use it second, you know, that's something we could, uh, maybe discuss with, uh, Mr. Brown and his staff, you know? And I'm, I'm just saying to augment, uh, the use of this piece of equipment too.
Something that was super, super heavy, yeah, I can see that.
Because you're really just trying to do sidewalks with this, realistically, right, sidewalks, and then maintenance throughout the spring, summer, and fall. You would have, have a bucket on it for you to use, or no, no bucket?
No, no, no bucket on this, no.
All right.
That's a, that's a different animal.
There's no hydraulics on this either, right?
No, no hydraulics.
So mechanically operated?
Right.
The, the, put the blade is manually lifted?
Yep.
Why don't you walk through the park it over here? You can, you can, no one may be to take you out again.
You can tell me how to get away with that, but you and I gotta get a coffee there.
Well, the police department is working on this building. You could probably rent some storage space there, because that's an unfunded mandate.
That would actually make sense in terms of, you know, recommendations to use it first.
Well, I, I'm, when we purchased that and went out and looked at it, that was the main goal, you know, and somehow, it's, it's kind of shifted, and, uh, I don't know whether it's a case where something, well, this is my piece of equipment, not your piece of equipment, uh, but, uh, you know, if they don't put a body into it until afterwards.
Right.
Wh- why can't buildings and ground use it first?
Right.
But.
Mr. Brown down D P W, he's, he's a great guy. I've already had this conversation about his equipment, borrowing it, and it's like, yeah, whatever I got.
I get along perfectly with everybody in town, you know that, David, you know.
You shouldn't lie, I'm looking at the bigger pieces of equipment that's on your life.
That smell's coming back.
I'm not getting a payload around here.
No, no. Okay.
We, we better start moving along, because.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, he does have a gun in, and if we don't get moving, he might use it.
And then the A D A improvements are just stuff throughout the buildings.
That list is extensively high. What I'm, my goal is this year to knock more and more off that list.
Yeah.
And that was from the comprehensive, let me be Carl Steinhardt, that was a comprehensive building study that was completed at great expense to the tax there.
I've noticed my, my building bikes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that. Investment-grade audit. Right, I, I saw that, it was in one of my drawers.
Yeah. So that's it for this building?
Yeah.
Then we go on to.
I got public safety that.
Yeah. Well, ours is a little mixed up. So we're doing fire first or police?
Well, I, mine just is public safety, like, they got, oh, I'm saying.
Okay. Oh, yeah, public safety, I'm sorry. Do you go back to buildings and grounds and pull it out of there?
Building inspector. And then there's two copies of it, it's all right.
Okay.
There, we got.
D D garage door base, one to five, making floor drain.
That's next.
Yeah.
That was on five years. Yeah, the, the, the biggie's coming up with those two is the replacement of the floors, and the plates are always a bad entryway with epoxy coating material. I don't know if anybody's got an opportunity to see what they just did in the garage door, but that's an amazing, amazing job they did.
They have it all covered up, and they tell you can't walk on it, so I don't know, and judging from the cell, when I was in the cell, I couldn't see that anyways, you know?
We use some windows in there as well.
Yeah, that, a better view would be nice.
Views from cell.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, David, windows in the cells is probably a bad idea.
We're working on it.
Bad idea? Bad idea, okay, fix that.
That's a light.
The thing is, if they got it on the floor, and I don't know how these guys don't slip, slide around on it, it's a, it's a rubbery, shiny, slippery surface.
Yeah.
And getting extremely worn out, and this, this, uh, this epoxy coating they put on it, and I watched the process as they were putting it in. Go a long way to making that floor safer, but also, you, you can't kill this stuff. This'll be the floor we put in, and it will never be done again.
Well, we started floors last year, almost like the library project a couple of years back, we did carpets in certain section every year.
Yeah.
The police department's no different. We took a chunk last year and did a certain amount, and then, was it three years you wanted chief, or two years for the floor program?
Depending on how we are probably, um, another section, you can possibly do a booking of high-traffic areas, and then another year follow-up with some of the carpet, because again, since it's been 20-plus years ago, it's still the same stuff, so, possibly areas probably.
I know Mr. Pinnell was interested in the building department, how many new houses we built, so his next question's gonna be, are the rests up or down, or how are we doing in that department?
Definitely.
Definitely, okay.
Are they comfortable in there?
What do you think?
But these floors will last as long as, uh, Chief Landis, because he'll be here for probably ten, fifteen years, right?
Yeah, that, that's, yeah. Yeah, Lisa's, this picture will be up for fifteen years anyways.
See, I gotta get this thing okay to get it done, because this guy likes to fix everything himself.
No, I know. Yeah.
Yeah, that, that one was that one, and the other was the, uh, the repainting of the, of the doors and the fire station.
I didn't realize they were painting, I thought they were all aluminum or steel and other paint. Wow.
There was a lot of processes that they were looking at, and they were gonna do an electoral thingy, what you call it, on there for almost double the price, and contacted some other folks, and thought that was really going on, and even, the only thing that made that process any better was, they don't waste as much material, because it sticks to it. As far as its longevity, it's absolutely zero difference. The number that I got here was from the same guy who did all the rest of the painting over there, and he proved his worth, uh, so that'll, that'll take care of that. They're changing it from red to, to green. Request.
Okay. They're gonna leave the emblems on the building to say fire department still, they have a tendency when they get stuff new that doesn't get lettered, so you make me nervous when you want to change the color of the door, no, I'm gonna sell past the clothes.
There's no lighting on the door.
Okay, good, I just.
Although you leave the fire trucks red, we're okay.
Yeah, well, that's probably coming next. It's a green community now, thanks to Mr. Fox, so.
Funny thing about that is, is I was questioning the painter, and I said, yeah, I want to go from red to green. Well, when he, when he told me what was going on, and I understood what it is that I do.
Yeah.
Colors have a tendency to disappear at certain rates. Red is one of the ones on the top, so if you've got something that's in the sun, one of the first colors that has started disappearing is red.
Right.
And wear it away, and, and, and the green is actually on the lower of the list, so you have the longest use out of that color before fades. I was like, well, I didn't know this stuff.
Right, and how old's that fire department? Twenty years?
It's. Roost brand new.
Roost brand new, I know that.
I think we got twenty. I think we got twenty-five years out of it.
That's what I guess, yeah, so twenty-five years out of the doors more or less, yeah.
I, I use a lot of yellow, Michael, because that takes a while to disappear and this way the sharks can find it.
Yeah. Okay. I don't see anything else.
I have trees at the library.
That was under my pile too. Yeah, the trees at the library, the, uh, I always wanted to do much snow. We've got that heavy wet snow and watching those limbs sagging on those trees that are running along the edge of that border to the left side of the library. Quite a few, quite a few things. The thing is, is that, well, trees that are, that we research, we have a lot of white trees that will do splits. And these are the trees that have the biggest problems. And because it's on the edge and it's southern exposure, that, that side of the, of the tree grows crazy. The other side is pretty much bare. Now you've already have a weight. It's not taking heavy snowfall and you start dealing with a tree that's already offset and, and it's, uh, ability to stay straight. It comes down, it's, it's gonna take out the entire building, these trees. And then I found out that, that the property line was right along that thing, right, right along to the left of that, like fifteen feet of the building. Maybe that's why nobody ever gets them down. But I had to do some research, I found out that that property line, that isn't a true property. True property line shoots way up on an angle, it's almost all the way to the insect kind of place to drive. And it's all on our property. And then with Randy Brown and they talk to conservation, which is really good to go with them. They're all on the road forward going. Get those trees out of there. Leave some of the small ones behind so they'll be a little fill and the ground stays nice. We're only gonna stump them at the surface, so we don't let anything loosen up and become a problem with that work down there. That's, that was the plan for that and the reason why.
And you got several quotes for that?
Yes, I got a pretty good quote for that. I know Randy has like the line item for trees.
He does.
You know, it, it makes sense for maybe people to sit down, but look, it is, these are what we need removed and have one out that do all removal. It might be more cost effective, but having going out for two or three different bids to all do the same job, well, same. Because I know he's, he was in here two weeks ago and he had some tree issues.
Yeah.
That he was gonna be bidding on. He's got tree issues, but you know, parking wreck, anybody else got tree issues, well, let's all get together. And put out one bid and get them all.
We do bid out because Randy's the tree ward. We do bid out when we have a, uh, I think last year we got one person that bid. Um, to be our tree person, you know, in case of an emergency, a storm. But what we're finding that, you know, like when the cemetery wanted to take down their trees and they went out and got bids and, and, and actually had some volunteers take down some stuff. We got some volunteers taking down some stuff at, uh, the town common.
Yeah.
Um, so, but this seems to be a little better because, because nobody, like I said, we got one bid.
Yeah.
And during the storm.
Yeah.
He didn't even show up because he's also got the bids with Agwan. So he made, made more money in Agwan, so we were.
Oh, yeah.
Way down on the list. So I, I, I hear you, Paul, but, but that's the reason I think why we're doing it.
Also, a lot of times it seems when we do get one or two contractors that do trees, this town's got several tree guys that are, I don't know how you say it right, but they like the town and they'll give you a better price, but they're not gonna sit there and go through the motions of going out to bid and being in that system.
Yeah, right.
And sitting there all year, you know? I mean, that's what we've learned, right?
Yeah.
Make a phone call because I know someone, you know, someone, and, uh, it's a town, you know?
Yeah, we seem to make out better.
Yeah. At least I do. Do you? Yeah, I don't know. I do, yeah, I mean, you get better prices, it seems.
Right.
David, a couple of things. This one is just inside. It shows me to see the mulch piled up on those, on the fruit trees around the library. Anyway, I think that's gonna kill your trees, but, um, just to kind of, but the other question I have on your budget is, because it's such a large budget, do you have, have you been able to highlight or identify things that you could defer or reduce? You know, to help with the, um, technical expenses?
Fire is going to go west. About these trees or in general?
No, no, not just your whole budget.
Oh my, oh, yeah, I see a lot of things, a lot of things. I've been here two and a half months and the first thing I did when I walked in the door was I put a stopper on Travis's campuses. Everybody that did, let all the crap, nobody goes nowhere until they talk to me. I got a bill in the mail for nine hundred and twenty-one dollars for a three-quarter fall bell. And had, had a conversation with the company. And I asked them why, and then I hear about these minimums and, and the, well, their guy said, and, and, and I was here my second day, looking at a guy sitting in his truck in one of the parking lots, just sitting there. And then an hour later he was out of the truck, and then an hour later he was back in the truck. And then I look at this and I go, well, yep, the GPS shows you exactly where you're at. So the company's over there clicking the clock away. And I'm getting bills for nine hundred and twenty-one dollars for a fall bell. I'm a heating and air conditioner, boilers in all my life. The most I ever paid was twelve ninety-five at IBS. And, uh, so these are the things that I'm looking at. Now they, everybody who comes to this town has to stop in my office first. They have to sign in who they are, who they represent, what they're doing here. And then they're taken to their place of, of job. When there, there's a book there, they'll sign in there with their, who they are, what they're there for, what they did, what time they left there. Then they have to come back here and leave. Because this lady tried to tell me, well, you was there for three hours doing all kinds of stuff. That was the second phone call that you made back to me when I told her I wasn't gonna be in my office. And, uh, I said, well, don't you think that that was the case? It would have been itemized in the bill. And it wasn't. And so my guy said he was here forty-five minutes, your guy said he was there three hours. Who do you think I'm gonna listen to?
So I appreciate that.
So this, this is the approach I'm trying to take with all the things that I do here. First I figure out, can I do it myself? I had a situation at the library that went over and took care of it fifteen minutes. If, if another contractor would have came out to do what I had done, it would have been twelve hundred dollars minimum.
So that's excellent. I'm pretty.
That's, that's my goal.
Saying that, so you have been able to go through your budget, like maintenance expenses and predict that I don't need to, uh, increase it like you're doing from forty-four to forty-six, you might be able to reduce it in that year, if you have these practices.
I don't know, I, I don't know what I'm up against yet. I've been here two and a half months.
Right.
Such a learning curve, it's not fun. No.
It feels like that, he's talking.
You know, you know, not to be funny, but then again, I'd like to be funny. Um, a good friend of mine told me, he, he defined my job pretty well. He says, it's like having an expensive fast sports car, but it's not allowed to go out a second year. It's taking you two and a half months just to figure out how to slow down. Luckily I have a lot of great help around here. Ooh, easy killer. And, uh, because otherwise I'd be doing everything myself.
Yeah.
You know, the, the tree thing, it's like with, with the rail trail. That's part of my responsibility now, I hear. You know, limbs and stuff, they fall, they do. That's why I need a chainsaw. We may not have one. Why don't I have a chainsaw? Where do I have to go find, beg, and borrow? Because, you know, if somebody tells me there's a tree down, first thing I'm gonna do is jump in my big giant truck with my chainsaw. I'm gonna go get it out of the way if I gotta drag it in my truck. I'm not gonna pay somebody five grand to come in to do what I can do, great. That's the, these are the things I wanna look at. These are the things that I wanna do, but, yeah, I'm still learning.
So I would assume next year at this time, he'll have a, a, a well-educated year under his belt of, of every line item, quite honestly. Because there is probably room that can be moved and there is probably some cuts you can make because you're in charge now versus for last year, we subbed everything out. We didn't, we didn't change toilet paper and all, so we got that at one point, I think. So.
The best thing about it is, is I've got a tremendous amount of resources to call on. There, there is nobody involved in this, in this, this town that I can't call and ask a question. And I won't get a straight answer. There's exactly what I need. Well, they'll volunteer the information so I can learn. So I got tremendous support. That's right from the top, all the way to the bottom.
Anything else?
I get raised.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's the other door. Take a left out of a hall. It says exit, just follow the stairs. You'll be fine.
Just don't burn yourself out.
No, no, that, I haven't even come close yet. I, I, you know, I, I like doing what I do. I like keeping busy. I like being hands-on. Luckily, you know, after the discussion when I first looked at this, this job, they gave me the availability to be here. Which helps me learn even quicker for me. Uh, and to be able to keep doing that, the more I can do, the more I have to save. But I got tremendous people helping me out. Like anything, it's a learning curve. As Joe said, you give me a year from now and I'll, I'll have this thing fine tomorrow, my wife will.
I expected much worse in your budget than you brought us. But someone calmed you down along the way, apparently, so that's.
Yeah, I was told, you know, how, how to, how to do this because I, I, I had two weeks to the deadline to come up with the things that we did come up with.
Yeah.
And if it wasn't for Hillary and, and for Kerry, we probably wouldn't have the things that we have.
Yeah.
Like I, I, I can't reiterate enough how much of a tremendous resource those two individuals are.
They are.
What they're waiting on. And what they did when there was nobody in this position, it's what we count.
Well, they had a great teacher, Carl Steinhardt.
Yes. I learned a lot from that man.
Yeah.
I thought I knew Carl. Nope.
No.
Every time I, I, I get in front of him, I learn something that I'm just amazed.
You're crying a lot less, so that's good.
Is he? That's good.
No, you.
I asked him the other day, but everybody told me no.
Check your contract. Alright, thank you, sir.
Thanks, David. Wait till next.
Yeah.
Next year, next year we're gonna torture you, buddy.
You know, my, my line is open. Got any ideas, any thoughts, any suggestions, anything? Please reach out to me and let me know. We'll learn this job together. Thank you.
Thank you. Police Department.
Right on time.
I lost that.
How are we doing?
Just about an hour off, that's all.
They're doing good.
Morning.
This'll be quick.
Morning.
Yeah. Good morning. Never is, right?
That's what they say to the guy that got shot on the battlefield, right?
We're gonna get the cadets version. Extended version.
Yeah.
So Chief Robert Landis, Police Department. A lot of this, I think we've had this conversation unfortunately a little ahead of time, so, uh, the first request that I had had was regarding the overtime line item.
Yep.
Thirty thousand dollar request. It was more for to bring us up to current spending trends. And, um, you probably seen, uh, March first, I submitted a letter to the finance committee and the board selecting during that some, uh, supplemental appropriation for salaries for fifteen thousand dollars. So that is gonna hopefully help carry me through the end of the year based on where our items is, and that's consistent with what we've been doing every year. Um, since our last meeting and talking with the board and the capital expenditures, um, if we were even to cut that thirty thousand dollar request to fifteen thousand dollars, uh, I think that'll still put us more in pairing with where our overtime expenditure is. I still may even need to come to you for supplemental funding. Uh, if that's the way you want, would rather do things, you know, it's more of a logistical thing. It's just, uh, there's gonna be the union, this will be signing, if it goes to town meeting and contracts, so there's gonna be extra, you know, monies there. Uh, with that educational incentives, so that's gonna affect overtime rates and certainly, um, I think it'll at least get us closer to where we are, so I may not even come for any supplemental funding barring perceived, uh, you know, personnel issues. So, um, I'm gonna leave that up to the expression of, of the board to discuss on how you want to do that, if you want to level fund it and I come for you for what I need. If that's the way you want to do it, then I'm fine with that as well. Um, rec patrol, we are in the negative. I'm not out of the fiscal year yet. We have, uh, depending on how the weather goes, May and June to consider, um, certainly demand in the lakes is what they a lot salary, um, we can expend it on that because we've gone from, on average, thirty to forty shifts a year or voting season to last season we get seventy because of COVID, and we expect to see the same this year. So, uh, a ten thousand dollar, um, well, I'm sorry, it would be a, yeah, ten thousand dollars. Should cover that as well. Part-time salaries line. Any questions on those last meetings? Can go in, if, if you have any questions regarding my letter, uh, also dispatcher salaries. There was a, um, looking for ten thousand dollars of supplemental funding, and that's a huge with our transition. We recently lost one of our part-time dispatchers due to case of, what we have, we consider to be open shifts. So every fifth and sixth day from four to twelve, sixteen hours every fifth and sixth day, we had an open shift that gets filled by a part-time dispatcher. And, uh, the, the young lady who took most of that has left. We've actually expended all of our part-time dispatcher salaries to date, and now it's coming from our full-time dispatcher overtime budget. So what we've done, uh, because of the shortage that we're seeing and, uh, to alleviate our full-time personnel who ordered in. They take overtime shifts that come available, but occasionally starting to happen is they've come ordered in. We've reached out to Westfield and there was three people that were interested in coming here part-time and they're gonna help fill that void. But to make that happen, we had to raise our salaries up to an overtime rate of pay, which is consistent with our dispatchers. So for a period of time, they will be receiving that rate of pay, which is gonna, you know, my salary is gonna go up as a result of it. The long-term goal for this though, the sixteen hours every fifth and sixth day is we're currently, uh, the first phase of our transition with Westfield is we are working on adding product installed. It's part of the long-term plan, but it's gonna be installed ahead of time to whereas the state will send nine one one calls at a particular time to Westfield. It's not gonna be the perfect system, but it's manageable. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna move those open shifts to midnight. That way they're, the call volume is less. We'll pull one of our full-time dispatchers down to four to twelve, and then those two open shifts a week will be at midnight. And Westfield is already, uh, when they looked at their manpower, uh, for this merge, they determined that the call volume isn't substantial enough to even add another dispatcher for them. So for them to receive these calls early shouldn't be a big jump. So once that's done, there'll be a big portion of our salaries that we won't have to pay. And there would be no cost to us. But until then, we're gonna, you know, there'll be, there'll be a cost associated with it. So the Chief Anderson had secured some money, uh, through a grant that they were awarded, and that's gonna fund this part of the project. And, uh, so everything is just being ordered. So we're kinda like at the mercy of what the supply chain is and that installation of the brand. So hopefully three, four, five months, we'll be able to, that's sixteen hours, once you come over the course of our transition, we'll be quite a bit of money that we save. So next, in my salaries line item, part-time's record clerk, Wendy has been with us for probably over twenty years. She has had increases as all our other, uh, town employees have, but her job has changed considerably from where it once was to, uh, now she handles a lot of the public records requests. Um, she's also, just past years, filled in quite a bit. Um, and helped my administrative assistant when she's out with payroll and things such as that. She is one of our part-time dispatchers and, uh, certainly at some point, some of her, her pay, her, her. certainly at some point, some of her pay, her she'll lose some pay there when we transition over, but I just was hoping to bring her up to what she was currently making as a part-time dispatcher, which weighs to a dollar eighty-six an hour. She works, I think it's eighteen hours a week now. Next, Cruiser Maintenance. And this is just generally at every other year expense, even though we are seeing everything go up. Tockington started to crack, they still think that current line item other than a seven thousand dollar request, and that's for our fleet of snow tires. So that's generally something we do every year. Again, under Operations. Looking for a budget increase in the ammunition firearms at two thousand sixty-eight. And that is just, and this is the one I'm hearing, maybe on the low end, but it's a ten percent increase in ammunition. P9 Supplies, Sergeant Wescott. The ammunition line item said that, you know, five hundred dollars just to cover the cost of food for the young, the small things that The next item under Capital is a patrol rifle. And what I'm looking for is this past budget, an amount of money that was allocated for a rifle and a shotgun, both of which were under the amount of whatever cost of procure separate. So what we did is I went and asked for that we combine those two, which was approved. We secured enough funds for one rifle. This year, I'm asking for the same thing, is all the monies we pulled together for one item, the firearms group identified another rifle as being the priority. And so the shortage, so combining the two in the shortage was a thousand seventy fifty-one. So that's what I'm asking for is to increase the patrol rifle for a total request of two thousand. And that'll probably still be short, and I'll try to, what I've drawn is some of the forfeiture lines through our drug accounting stuff, I try to make up the difference over the years. And then under New Capital, this conversation I've had with you all in the past, it wasn't something that totally in the beginning, I thought I was gonna come before you with, I thought it was gonna be your help, but that would be the patrol boat. For a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And the reason for coming for a few now is because of the delay in getting this product. It's not gonna see the most likely delay this year because they're so far behind from what the damage telling us. I'm getting this stuff to the customer. A boat, thirty-seven years old, it's more than served its purpose, but you know, we've got to the point where it's a piece of equipment that we need to be able to have on the lake. But the officers had a safe platform to work above. And that it can do the things that we needed to do for recovery and patrol as well.
Chief, it's probably worth mentioning that you were, you would normally require a rotation of three patrol units. And you're gonna reduce that to two with a budget to offset the boat request?
Yeah, we, how do you, no, no. You know, what I've done, what I've done
Good answer.
For the boat is, I think I know where you're coming, is if I have three people on, I would take one officer and put him on the boat and on the lake because we couldn't fill that void. Because generally, the boat in years past has always been overtime ship.
No, excuse me, I was asking about the, yeah, the cruisers.
Oh, oh, the cruiser, no, the way the cruiser is that I was, yes, yes. So this would have generally been a year for three cruisers. One of which would have been to replace my car, which is the highest mile car in the fleet. But I brought it to our mechanic, gone through it, identified some things that we didn't be done, which basically breaks and was continuing to maintain. And we're, I, you're looking at about for an administrative vehicle, forty-five to fifty thousand dollars. Totally outdated, radio and everything. So I'm opting to forego that procurement so those monies can go towards the And lastly, is a, is a paper shredder. The current one we have is fifteen years old. This past year and a half, we've undergone a major purge of all our records based on what the records law allows us to do and through interns and some individuals that in the town that needed some things to do, we shredded everything. And, but it's it's seen better days and the cost of fixing it just isn't as
Is that project done? Did you consider, or do you still have strategy?
We actually are done very, very well. It's a lengthy process because we have to get everything approved through the state. And so everything we do, we have to, all our files must be put together. We have to submit a Google letter to the state. And we are almost done for the most part. We emptied out a lot of our five-week outlets, just because over the years, everything just pushed off to the side. Because it is, it does take a while.
I was asking because I didn't know if you considered shredding service.
Well, the town has and has done it, but the problem is, we needed it done, we needed the stuff out of there, we needed the room. So instead of waiting, we were able to, again, through people that needed, we had individuals, part-time handle patrol, who was interested in to do certain things, so they could sit in front of the shredder and shred it to death, so. So that is what I have for this. So next up would be our dispatch budget. And because of the transition we're in, it's pretty comfortable that we can work with it under the monies that the current salaries. The transition period, from what I'm told from the last vendor we were looking at, start ordering the components, roughly guessing is the year out completion. There's just so many unknowns. We recently just had we're out to bid again, they made the better price. And that was completed the other day as far as site visits. April twenty-fifth is gonna be the deadline for, and all the parties to submit their bids. And so still, the end of April, so we'll make, so we're looking at the end of the fiscal cycle of next year, best case scenario. So we're gonna need the salaries to carry us through dispatchers assignment contract, not too long ago. I know Laura has been working on what you know, the expenditure is gonna be for our full-time staff as an entire out, so that's outside of what I'm proposing. But I believe because of part of our, by that time, part of our process will be Westfield. Six months, so some salaries, I hope for a while. The rest is all unknown. I don't know how this project, what hurdles may come up along the way, but hopefully we'll all manage it all. Lastly, and if I could ask. Who's back, our animal control officer and
Yeah. One word, one line, no request for additional funding for fiscal year twenty-three, however. On our gift medical account that we have, people have donated to the shelter as far as medical stuff goes. Allowing us to do an awful lot of stuff for the animals that more so, you know, we would not have been able to do. But I'm told by the state that we can't, we can't solicit funds from the general public, it's not legal. So we stopped doing that this year. And now I'd like to see if we can take that medical funding and have it as a line item and accounted, so that we would have a base amount from account as a line item for medical procedures that we need to do. Veterinary costs have skyrocketed, spays and murders that we are required to do prior to the adoption have skyrocketed. So while we do have donations from, say, right, so say we have IBS. They collect monies for shelter animals, it's under shelter animals. What they do is instead of people donating directly to the shelter, they donate to IBS. And they want to say, why are we gonna check from IBS? It says, hey, you know, we're not soliciting our funds, but it's a gray area according to the state, but it can still be done. So while the active pursuit of donations from the general public cannot be done. And, and that has obviously slowed down. We are still getting donations, however, I'd like to see that become more of a line item issue so that we have that secure base and we don't have to be nervous about, are we gonna talk about this?
So I guess we're not looking for funds this year.
Right.
Something presented itself to us. So what I'm more so looking is as we progress through this year is that is gonna look back and kinda see where our medical expenses generally are and create a line item. Create a line item, go to whatever that dollar amount is. The gift account is being used as a gift account. She needs a cement pad and an enclosure for chickens and different things that
Hey, blame West Breakdown, they're bringing all the damn chickens to town.
Whatever the project might be, but you know, the gift account, use it as a gift account. But, you know, in, in some of these, this medical expense, we have to look at it as this medical expense instead of being cured by the other agencies that are working with us, we can go that along. And that the monies that they pay to us, I mean, which is substantial, we bring over those numbers and it more than, you know, pays for the services that, you know, take upon us. But like, at the police department, we, you know, anywhere, we have a specific line item to cover certain things, she doesn't have that. And her gift account is always with the givers, right? And so she doesn't go in the hole, so we're trying to just, wanna throw that out as a to have a conversation moving forward.
You can't solicit, but can people solicit on your behalf? Like if a private citizen wanted to start a campaign, would that?
Sure. And if that citizen wished to donate, we cannot say, hey, listen, can you give me there and just like with the money. But it the Lions Club did, they did a dinner for us. Like Chevelle's gas station, they still have the jar that says we wish to support animal shelters. It does not say we wish to support the Southwood Animal Shelter.
You can't say that?
No.
Okay.
They can, they can.
They, okay.
But we've asked it, no, you just don't mention us as far as all that goes, we just wanna make it a general. And if you, if you want to donate to us, that's fine, but I cannot ask for that, I cannot solicit that. We can't have tag sales, we can't have fake sales, we can't have all those neat things that, that used to
Isn't that why there's the Southwood Police Association, the Southwood Fire Association, Friends of the Rail Trail?
We could do Friends of
Right.
But then everything we needed, we'd have to go through them.
But I also understand carrying the line item because there are certain expenses that are required. But how that line item gets funded, you have to budget for it, but where the and again, in this budget, we talk about it every time, in this budget, we don't have the income sources
Right.
for where the budget, but you do gotta carry the expense, you know, if
Right.
if you have to have spay and neuter expenses as a part of your job, you need to carry the budget.
That's state law.
So this is a project for the coming year, the coming for you guys next year, with hopefully a more detailed plan, but it's just something that came to us. That's why it's now
And other than that, I, I, we've been able to maintain on the budgets that we have for the past few years, at least since I've been here, I don't really ask for your types. I've been able to maintain, it's really cool.
So if I purchase a cat or dog, is that expense passed on for that new litter spay?
No.
No.
Now, then that's a good point. Our adoption fees are one forty or one sixty. That used to be able to cover all of the vaccinations
Most of the year.
and all that stuff. Now, the veterinary costs are almost double
Yeah.
on that, so when we ask for one forty or one sixty for adoption, we're not, we're not, we're not to the point where we're covering it at all. So that's where this will
Going to learn the problems of the ounce too expensive to do it all.
No, no, absolutely, I just wanted to get that out there, that it's not, yeah.
No, and I mean, other places are charging five hundred dollars. I mean, even as a private animal rescue, I would die to have to charge somebody that much.
Why, all your rescues are purebreds, they're worth it.
Everybody likes a good chicken.
There you go. See, there you go. Yeah, yeah, four hundred. We, at my personal rescue, two fifty was two fifty, three hundred. And if we charged three hundred, we give fifty back, that was spay and neuter. Because we didn't believe at that point to do pediatrics, but now, even I'm looking for a dog and going, there's another shot. Yeah, I'm not gonna pay that. I'm not gonna pay five hundred thousand dollars for a rescue.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
School, right? Are they here?
Jan here, Mr. Presnell and You gotta check Mr. Presnell's ID.
Do we need a break?
No, I'm just
Does it say break? Yeah, we'll take a two minute break.
Got everybody here.
Yeah. All right, folks, welcome back. Next up is the school department, regional school system.
Well, I'm Ron Stevenson, I'm the school committee chairman for the, for our district. I am not gonna be doing hopefully any major speaking this morning, but I do have our superintendent Jen Willard and Steve Presnell on Zoom, that they have got the budget, and I think everybody has a copy of the summary. And I believe Steve and Jen are gonna be going over that, and obviously
Is this Steve's last?
It might be.
No, I, yeah.
It might be.
Rumor has it, it might be.
He's shaking his head, so I didn't wanna let
Maybe he's on the camera line.
Yeah.
He's saying no, but it really
Saying no, but he means yes, or yes.
This might be Mr. Presnell's last presentation, so I, I mean, I guess in, in the spirit of making it a little easier on him, I think that would be awesome.
Well, that's not gonna happen.
No, no.
I tried Steve.
And we always have to make sure Steve has his, I see he's got his ID on today. So it's official, it is Steve Presnell.
Jen's got hers too.
Yeah, but it's more about Steve.
And I didn't do fingerprinting, you're in safe. You gotta be safe.
It's, it's not official unless we're wearing these.
You can't bill for it, I understand. All right, folks, you have the floor. Give us some exciting news.
Okay, well, I'm not so sure it's gonna be super exciting, it's kind of what we predicted when we had our November Budget Roundtable meeting. Ability to share my screen? Can you do that?
Second, we'll try. Go ahead.
Say, share my screen. All right. And I can't find it. Hold on.
If you were in person, we wouldn't have this one.
Hey. Okay. So just go to the beginning of the budget. So as I always start off our budget, I always want to start off with connecting our budget to our educational initiatives because that's what, what we're really about. We're really about giving our kids and our students the best possible education that's out there. And right now, to really focus on these educational initiatives, we're really making a big shift in literacy from a balanced literacy program to what they call the science of reading. It's scientifically based. It's be, we're being told we need to be teaching this from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And luckily enough, we were able to get some high quality instructional materials, which is another path that they're asking us to go down that have been DESI approved. So we have all of that. And what we're really doing is working with our teachers K to six on the steps of reading and how to pull small groups and what specifically the students need in order to build that strong phonemic and foundational ability to decode words when they get to larger words. We're also going to continue being a trauma informed school. As you know, we've had a lot of social emotional issues post COVID. They're greater and they're greater. We were not, we were just like everybody else in the country where we saw a significant increase in social emotional issues in our schools and that reflects in behaviors. The nice thing about this is that I, when I presented it the other day, we have to go by the October 1 Sims. And if you look at the October 1 Sims, it looks like we're down to 1301 in the foundational budget. We just did our March 1 Sims and we're actually up 13 kids. So between September and between March, we are actually up 13 children. So we are seeing a greater increase in the number of students in our building. One of the caveats is we have a lot of school choice students in our upper grades because we used to have larger class sizes. So we were able, I'm sorry, we had more teachers at a grade because we had larger grade, grade level classes. We had classes of 120, 115. So we were able to take more school choice students. Right now, we're seeing class sizes coming in at about 80, 85. And so we have to walk that really fine line of adding school choice and making it so that our class sizes are still small enough to meet the individual needs of the students in our school districts who are, who we are primarily responsible for. With that said, Steve is going to go into the budget a little bit more in depth. But I do want to let you know that the budget that we have brought forward today, we did offset it with, again, a very significant increase from our E and D. Our E and D, we used to contribute between 5 and 550,000. This year, we were able to offset it with 875,000. We did up our school choice number by about $93,000 and, no, 9, 93,000. And for Russ Fox, a few years ago, he asked us about rural school aid. And he's like, what's going on? And we, it was brand new. We didn't know about it. We didn't know if it was going to be consistent or not. So we do feel comfortable now. We're in year four of getting the rural school aid. So we are now including it as a line item to offset greater assessments to the districts. One of the biggest things you're going to see in this budget is a huge increase of out of district vocational tuitions. So our minimal local contributions went up about $600,000 this year. 287,000 of that is in vocational tuitions. We are still following school committee policy where if a program is offered at our CTEC program, then our students must attend our CTEC program. But what Smith Voc offers and what Westfield Technical Academy offers are some really unique programs. And Smith offers a large agricultural programs and it's really like a special niche for a lot of our communities and a lot of our families because we are blessed to have farmland and people who still work the land. And there's animal science, animal agriculture. Just wonderful programs. So we're thrilled to be able to offer that to our students. However, it does come with a significant cost. And with that, I will turn it over to Stephen.
Thanks, Jen. Good morning, everybody. Is it still morning? Yes.
It is.
We'll try, we'll try to get you guys out of there by noon time. So for those of you who, and I know several of you, Karen and Doug and Russ were at our public hearing on Tuesday. This is, this should be the last time that I'm doing one of these budget presentations. You got to see me in a nice suit with a nice shirt and tie. And this morning, I'm here in tattered flannel. But the one constant is we still have the, the ID badge. So just a couple of quick remarks about the, the change from kind of between FY '21 and up to what we have proposed for FY '23. From FY '21 to FY '22, we actually had our appropriations decrease by $385,000 or almost one and a half percent from the, in FY '22 to, from FY '21. The assessments to the three towns combined decreased by $258,000. As a result of the pandemic, the plans that the state had to launch its Student Opportunity Act and, and change the foundation budget got delayed by a year. We also had significant inflows of grant funds pandemic related, but we were able to use a lot of that to deal with costs that qualified. We had the towns sharing some of their coronavirus relief grant money with us. We're deeply appreciative of that. There was an ability, presumed ability to offset minimum local contribution increases using ESER grant funds. That turned out not to be the case when the final state budget was passed in July. But there are a number of things like this, plus some depressed spending in certain categories of expense that allowed us to move forward for the, what's the current fiscal year, FY '22, with these significant reductions. What's happening for FY '23 is the pendulum is, is kind of swinging back and we're, we're making up that, that ground. And the state is implementing this Student Opportunity Act. So FY '23 will be the first, first full year of, of implementation. And how that's going to be affecting our, our member towns is that there really isn't going to be any significant state, state assistance, financial assistance. They have mandated that we get the $30 per student annual increase to the Chapter 70 aid. For us, that's about $39,000. It's not a, it's not a significant sum of money. And it, it would be great if the enrollment picture does start to, to, to tick back up in the opposite direction of where it's been going for, say, the last 20 or more years. We've seen that the, the, the Chapter 70 aid, the, the per capita aid shrink over time because of the declining enrollment. So going, going forward, hopefully it starts to tick back up because students do equal, equal dollars. But the foundation budget as part of this Student Opportunity Act, the foundation budget is, is going to grow. They've adjusted the, the formula rates for a number of categories of expenses that historically grew at a faster rate than what, what the foundation budget allowed for. Benefits and fixed charges, that, that rate was increased. Guidance and psychological services also sped out of district costs. So when we have to send a child to a special program outside of our school district, the, the, the factor that the state was using in the foundation budget formula had lagged behind what the actual rate of increase was for those, for those tuitions. We also have English language learners. That, that's another rate that got adjusted as well as low, low income students. So the foundation budget is going to grow over the next seven years. It's a seven year phase in, starting in FY '23. And so that's going to grow, but because our district is already receiving millions of dollars in Chapter 70 aid that we don't technically qualify for. And that, and that was largely driven by the enrollment decline over years. So we're in what they refer to as their hold harmless status, which is a provision they've maintained where they will not reduce the amount of Chapter 70 funding that, that we get despite what happens with, with enrollment or our operating costs. So because they're already giving us more, they're not going to give us any more other than the $30 per head. But the foundation budget is growing. And what it really means is that the, each town's share of that foundation budget, the minimum local contribution that's calculated based on the aggregate wealth model that the state uses to determine how much, combined with the, the actual enrollment by, by town, how much each town is responsible for toward the cost of educating its, its school age children. So you've got a increasing foundation budget, flat state aid, and the minimum local contributions for the towns growing. So you, you can expect to see that over the next seven years. So it will, it will certainly present some, some funding challenges going forward. So with those opening remarks, I, do you guys have the budget summary sheet in, in front of you? Do you have that available? Otherwise I can, okay. So I'll, I'll talk about the expenditures quickly first. The, the, the biggest increases that, that you see there in general administration. The reason for that is simply we need to, we are in the middle of a negotiation process with our teachers union. Are obviously our largest collective bargaining group in, in the district. Their current contract ends at the end of this June. Superintendent and the negotiation team from the school committee are negotiating a, a renewal of that. Dollar figures undetermined at this time, but we need to reserve some funds for the anticipated settlement of that negotiation process. And so those funds are parked in our general admin salary reserve account. For obvious reasons, I can't get too deep into what, what, what that represents because it is a negotiation process. But there's a, an amount there that's, I would say typical of what we would ordinarily carry in, in that, in that line in such years as this. And that's really accountable, that really accounts for all of the increase to that, that category of spending in general admin. Employee benefits, we're showing that up by 6, 6.18% or $168,000. That really has to do with the need to carry 12 months of health insurance premium, the employer's share of health insurance. For FY '22, we were able to reduce that to 11 months because we received a premium holiday from our, our insurance carrier. We're with the Maya Health Trust. And they were, they had a, a good year and were able to return, return some funds through, through this premium holiday. So we only had to cover 11 months in the current fiscal year. Another reason why our spending was, was, or our budget was down for the FY '22 year. So that has to get taken back up to where it ordinarily would have been. And that's, that along with the increase to the pension assessment through the Hampton County Retirement System accounts virtually for almost all of the $168,000 increase. As Jen mentioned, vocational out of district costs, we've been hit hard by that. Some of that increase is incorporated into this out of district vocational line. The tuition line that you're looking at in the budget summary, some of it is actually being carried below the line. We're using rural school aid to help pay for that because the rural character of the district and some of the programs that our students are, are seeking out in a vocational school setting, the agricultural and we, we felt that that was an appropriate use of, of the rural school aid grant. We also have seen an uptick to the tuition we're being charged for school choice students going out of the district. We've been a very strong school choice district. We've had two to one, almost approaching three to one at times in terms of students coming into our district versus going out. That's narrowing just a little bit. Some of it, we're attributing, we believe that it's attributable to the pandemic and students, some cases, getting a taste of a, a virtual education. And there are some state sponsored or state approved virtual academies or virtual schools that students can attend. We've had an uptick in the number who are, who are there. Our original, we originally anticipated that those students would be coming back to, to the district. And they are coming back in some numbers, but not, not as rapidly as, as we would like. And that's true statewide. A number of the DESI webinars that I've been on and the Masbo presentations I've listened to, the, the return of students to their public school district has been slower. There was a, a lot of students went to private school options where mask wearing was not required. They went to these virtual or online academies. And those students are, are coming back in, at a slower pace than, than was anticipated. Enrollment statewide is down, like almost 40,000 students. And so what's happening with us is not, is not unique by any stretch. And as Jen pointed out, maybe we're actually even this year seeing, seeing some of those students return as, when we look at the spring foundation enrollment numbers. So, and so beyond, beyond that, transportation is up a bit. A lot of that being driven by negotiated contract increases for collaborative, lower Pioneer Valley collaborative drivers. Insurance, we anticipate that being down. A lot of that is attributable to the fact that we are no longer employing our drivers. So those folks are, are, they're, they're not our employees any longer. We don't have to cover that. We don't have that workers' comp insurance expense. And we did get a large credit this year that would be applied to next year's premium. So that's why we're predicting that cost to go down. Our technology lease, growing by $25,000. This is a continuation of our ramp up of our one to one initiative and using lease, operating lease arrangements through state, available state contracts to acquire our end user technology. So any, any of the laptops that our students are issued and we are essentially fully one to one right now, that, that program has kind of accelerated because of the pandemic. And, and we're, we're pretty, I, I, I don't know if it was dumb luck or some divine intervention, but the fact that we had started that program just prior to the pandemic hitting turned out to be quite fortuitous for us. We were in a, a pretty decent position to, to accommodate that. We did have challenges around accessing devices, but eventually we're able to scramble and find, find things. We did have challenges around accessing devices, but eventually we're able to scramble and find find things that we could use. So that program continues to wrap up. I would say by the end of fiscal twenty four, it should plateau. And then every year thereafter, the number should be pretty much the same, maybe a a percent or two up or down, depending on what happens with cost of of technology from year to year as we have to replace the devices that are coming off of lease with with new new devices. The debt service for our capital improvement program just ticking up very slightly. And the school building project debt service that, as we've said many times before, that just goes up by a few thousand and down by a few thousand from year to year, depending on the amortization schedule for the outstanding bonds, the debt service on that. At at the schools themselves, the the numbers are pretty pretty flat. Small decreases at Woodland and Powder Mill. Again, bear in mind that the cost of living adjustments or whatever negotiated rate increases for FY twenty three and beyond, that those are still being negotiated. So those are not in the numbers here, just the changes that folks have to their either steps or in some cases known lane changes on on the salary schedule are are in these numbers.
Steve, can I jump in for one second?
Sure thing.
Just just quickly, I just want to let you know, I forgot to mention that this is not a level service budget. We did when we were looking at it, we looked at enrollments, we looked at class sizes. And we do have a decrease in four point five F T E positions from last year's budget to this budget.
And and that's largely what's driving those either flat or deep, uh, flat numbers or decreases from FY twenty two to FY twenty three in in those cost centers. Special education is up by two and a half percent, so below what what the budget increases. Some of that due to anticipated additional use of LP VEC programs for for some of our students. And salaries, so some of the hires that we had during for FY twenty two came in a little higher than than where we had assumed that they might. So just a function of of who's in the position and where they are, where they fit on our our salary schedule. So overall, spending covered by appropriations and by the the net school spending sources of revenue and our and some of the other revenue sources we have are up up by a hundred, eight hundred fifty six thousand or or three point three two percent, which is kind of in that range that we normally find ourselves. We're usually, you know, historically, it's usually been anywhere from like a probably two and a half to three and a half percent increase from year to year on the spending side. So i- in order to, as I mentioned, your assessments, they're all going up. I mean, in in all three towns, largely driven by the minimum local contribution requirements of the of the foundation budget and the chapter seventy program. Southwick is seeing the largest increase. Obviously, percentage wise, as as well as dollar wise. Granville's not far behind you. Tallinn is actually seeing a decrease to its minimum local contribution. But because we do have a roughly one hundred and ninety thousand dollar discretionary assessment in our in our numbers here, Tallinn actually is seeing overall an increase to their to their contribution as well. But you're not concerned about Tallinn, you're concerned about Southwick. So again, the the factors of the minimum local contribution increasing. When when the final budget. So we were able last year to have basically no discretionary assessment for the three towns. We had utilized the eighty six thousand dollar ESER funds to cover the what what was supposed to be an eighty six thousand dollar increase to your minimum local contribution. So that that turned out to be flat. But by the time the final budget was passed in July, the minimum local contribution assessments actually went up. And I think, Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, it might have been a couple, district wide, a couple hundred thousand, maybe.
I think the town of Southwick's increase to the required local contribution was about one twenty seven.
Okay, one twenty seven for Southwick and and the numbers for the other the other towns. So so there was al- already a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollar increase plus the eighty six that we came in as a as kind of a credit. And what's happening this year with the uptick being driven largely by the the Student Opportunity Act. You you're looking at a significant, significant increase. We did talk about this, Jen was very upfront about the fact that you would be looking at some possible sizable increases to to your assessment when we held our annual our annual budget roundtable back in, I think it was late November. The other thing, the other factor that that's in there with this Student Opportunity Act is the the inflation factor. Which would have been even higher this year, but they capped the, at least the iteration that we have right now of the the governor's budget. And again, these 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 revenue numbers that that have a that deal either with your minimum local contribution or the state's state sources of revenue. Those are all based on the governor's house two budget that he released back in late January. We won't see the House Ways and Means budget, which would be the next iteration of a of a state proposal till probably sometime in in April. By then, it's really, it's too late. And we've got to put a, the school committee has to approve a budget proposal and assessments for by the end of this month, so you guys can have it for your annual town meeting warrants. And so we'll really have to work with the governor's, the governor's proposal, which is subject to change through the state budget process. So who knows where where the number numbers will actually land. But they did cap, at least the governor's proposal has the inflation factor cap. And I drawing a blank on what what rate that was, but it was, they used a number that was less than what the actual measured inflation was to try to mitigate the increases to to the local communities. On the revenue side, aside from the the assessment increases, we see our Medicaid reimbursement is being flat. The regional transportation reimbursement that Governor Baker put forward represents a a decrease of about five percent. The legislature oftentimes tries to one up him on that. So we're and and there's pressure from various groups to try to bump that up. So we're hoping that 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 gets back up to, you know, eight fifty or nine hundred thousand before before that's said and done. But this is the number we have at this point in time. The Easter two subsidy about midway in that revenue list. You see that was there for FY twenty two. That won't be available, obviously, in FY twenty three. The chapter seventy eight going up by thirty nine thousand, that's just thirty dollars per head of on on every student that's in our foundation enrollment. Charter tuition reimbursement going down by twelve thousand. Thankfully, on the other side, the the charter tuition that we're assessed for students in our district who go out outside to a charter school, that number's going down. So on the expense side, the number is going down by an even larger amount. I think it's down by fifty fifty thousand ish. So although that's a decrease there, it was all, it was also decreasing on the expense side. As Jen mentioned, our use of restricted surplus or E and D funds is stable at eight hundred and seventy five thousand. We're able to do that again this year because we we bumped right into the the legal limit, which is five percent of the ensuing year's budget. So our E and D is measured like like your free cash measured at June thirtieth of twenty twenty one. We were, we actually came in, we've, we always try to manage this to close to the limit. Some some years we do better than others. We're actually sixteen thousand dollars over. And so that will be coming back to the three towns in the pro rata share, either through the last assessment that we bill you bill you for for FY twenty two or through a a reduction to your assessment in FY twenty three. So we're, you know, that's, it's it's a good position to be in where we're maxed out on our our E and D. It does allow us to continue to contribute large sums to offset assessments in the in the budget proposal. And our lease revenue from the collaborative leasing our buses. If some of you may recall, we we when we outs made the decision to outsource transportation to the collaborative, we worked with the Department of Revenue, their legal team, as well as bond counsel and our financial advisor to to come up with a a way in which we would have a continue to have a revenue stream to help support the debt service on the vehicle purchases that we had financed. So we typically would be financing vehicles over five years. I think the last year that we purchased vehicles, we did it over four years to kind of speed up process by which we we would no longer be responsible for acquisition or and debt service on on those vehicles. So as as the number, as the vehicles, as the debt service on the vehicles matures, the vehicles are sold off to to the collaborative and they take full ownership and possession of them. That that's a declining number from year to year. So I think we have two more years after FY, after this year, where we will still own a handful of vehicles that will be leased to the collaborative. They pay us the the lease fee and in the final year of of that of that payment, they take ownership of it. And it provides a revenue, the the lease payments provide a revenue source to offset your debt service assessments for for transportation related costs. So that's down by fifty six thousand in in FY twenty three. And and then the other, these other small revenue sources, look, look, contribution from our tuition revolving account, which is driven largely by pre K enrollment tuitions flat at twenty five thousand and fees for parking and athletics remaining flat at at forty five thousand. So that's, and below the line, we have some of the grants. I mean, this list I mentioned at the Tuesday night session, this list keeps growing. We used to have three or four lines and COVID actually has implicated that. So for the, typically, we wouldn't list a single year type uses of of grant funds, but recurring uses where we're using that year after year for whether it's salaries, whether it's special, special services, supplies out of district tuition. So the you can see the school choice revolving account, the second line from the bottom. We're using that extensively. Our, to to kind of circle back to school choice and how that's been a kind of a financial boom to this district. Our school choice revolving account at June thirtieth sat at one point six million dollars. We have been man trying to manage this and have been successful in doing so, managing it for sustainability. It's actually even grown over the years. So that that's the highest that had ever been. We feel comfortable at this point using a million of that for the out of district vocational tuitions and special education tuitions that we anticipate in in FY twenty three. And the, I have a couple of TBDs in there for the S or two and S or three grant, only because some of that is still still being determined like for us, but particularly for S or three. And in Jen's presentation, she she highlights this. We we are using, tho- those funds were allowed to be used for capital improvements to the district that are in some way, shape or form, can be tied back to or relate to the pandemic. So there were several projects that that we submitted to D E for approval that we felt had either very strong or reasonable links to pandemic response. And we're, we're okay to go forward with those. So it's offsetting really coming coming back to to the towns, looking for a lot of money in our capital program to to address some of these needs. All of these items were on our on our five year capital plan to address. The Easter funds means that we're getting the federal government to, the use of these are funds. We're letting the federal government pay for that instead of having to come back to the taxpayers or.
And Steve, it's it's close to about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're using out of the Easter three grant to do these capital projects. And and I really think that's going to pay off in dividends because although the required minimum local contribution is going up, the debt payment for borrowing should be going down. So we used to come to the three communities asking for about six hundred thousand dollars a year for capital. This year, we're asking to borrow two hundred thousand in capital to just work on the student parking lot. And our intention is to use a close to a million dollars out of the Easter three funds to do the other capital projects that we don't have to put on the taxpayers of our three communities.
So we could, we could try to tackle any any questions you might have or or concerns you might want to express.
Steve, out of the Southwick assessment increase of eight hundred and eighty one thousand dollars, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this, that about a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars is local contribution the state told us we had to put in. Eighty six thousand dollars comes from the Easter funds that you gave back last year, but shouldn't have to the towns. So that's about two hundred and twelve thousand. That leaves about six hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars of increased assessment to the town, which is basically made up of the contract negotiations that you're going to be going through. And then the trick, the the tuition and the transportation, that's probably a lot of it associated with the tuition from the kids going to the vocational schools. Is that kind of?
Well, so.
In a nutshell, that's what I'm thinking out of this this budget. And then the positive part is that you used another round of Easter funds for capital, so we don't have to worry about capital expenditures this year.
Right, mo- most of what you said is accurate, Karen, there's a, there's some subtleties there. So the the actual, if you look at what the minimum local contribution was when it finally got settled by the state in July, which was far too late for any of us to do anything about it. The the actual the FY twenty two minimum local contribution for Southwick was supposed to be nine point two million dollars. That that number is growing in FY twenty three to nine point six million dollars. So from what the state thought it should, was supposed to be to where it's going this year, it's going up by four hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars.
And then there's, then there's the addition of the delta from the year before, Steve, I think that's what.
Correct.
Right.
So if you add both of those together, it's.
That's six hundred.
It's about six hu- six hundred thousand and obviously.
More mu- more money.
They're not going out to the casino, I like to go through stuff. Yeah, that's where most of that money's coming from.
So it really is all that we were told that we have to spend. It's not. We want this, we want this, we want this.
No, and I mean, for, I guess, from my end, being the first year on the school committee and being part of the finance committee with Steve, it's been quite a learning curve. But to go through this with him and some of the other members and the information that is getting through there. It's certainly from from what I see, they are doing a very good job prudently making sure that if we are going to be. making sure that if we are going to be passing on any expenditures to the town, that they're valid, they're warranted and they're needed. That, that, because I asked him the exact same question. What, what makes up this money? And what, the big chunk is they were off last year because I, I don't see another way for them to do this without. They're, they're doing their best guess with respect to what the, what the final number is going to be. That was off by over a hundred thousand dollars. Then they were told they could use 96,000 and give you guys sort of like a holiday on that. Well, guess what? That was wrong. So there, now you've got almost 200,000 there. The number goes up by 400,000 this year. And now we've got a bunch of kids going to Smith, Smith's boat and Westfield Tech appropriately because our C tech school doesn't have all these programs. Some of them are very specialized.
I just wanted to make sure I was kind of summarizing everything that's being said to the main points. And I think.
Yeah. And the nice thing I saw too, when, when Jen and Steve went through the, the capital request and, and Jen, I don't know if you can, do they have a copy of all those items? I think it's on the.
Yes.
I mean, it's nice to say, I mean, during the take almost a million dollars from S R three, get those, those needed capital programs done. Where the only thing that they're looking to bring to the three towns, 200,000 to do the parking lot, which Steve, I'm assuming won't need to get done for how many more years after that's done?
Yeah. 15, 20 years?
Yeah.
I mean, we tend to get a lot of mileage out of them. This, this, this lot is, is long since overdue.
No, they won't, they won't come back, Joe. Those are going to be, and Jen, correct me if I'm wrong here. The capital allocations on that sheet that have the dollar amount, those are full funding of those programs with ESR three funds. So once they're done and completed, it's done.
Correct. We won't, those would be typical things we'd have to be bringing to you over the next few years to borrow under our capital plan. But we were able to cover them under the ESR grant so that we don't have to ask for borrowing for them. We're going to use ESR funds to do those capital projects.
I, I can speak.
Does that mean all the next year, if you still won't be looking for capital money because you put it all in here and use the ESR fund?
No, because we still asked for 200,000 this year for parking, but it's significantly less, significantly less, which it has, does have a direct impact on your non-discretionary payback of our borrowing. When we used to borrow 600,000 a year, it'd be spread out over five years. Now you're borrow 200,000 a year. That's spread out over five years. So it's significantly less.
So they're down 400,000 this year from what they typically would ask. But yeah, I would, I would, I'm on your same line is that, look, if these are on the major lists and we've now tacked off a million dollars, you would think that over the next couple of years, there would be a lower than average ask unless unforeseen things pop up. But either way, we're going to be.
And you're recorded on that.
Do you hear the unforeseen things yet?
You're recorded.
There's a billion dollars worth of things that they need to get done that they're, that they're taking off the list.
So some of these, if I can speak to them just for a second, some of these might've been coming, like, you know, a couple, few years down, down the road. They had varying degrees of importance, but our ability to link them to the, to the pandemic, it was an opportunity to tick these off the, off the list now a, as opposed to having to pay for it using, using our member towns funds through, through debt service. The, the HVAC system at Woodland School, some of you may recall, there were, the, the newest wing at Woodland School was probably really the only area that didn't get significantly touched by the MSBA projects. They just, it was too new for them to deal with. So there is legacy HVAC equipment there that, that is nearing its end of useful life. This is a perfect use for that because one of the responses to the pandemic was increasing the amount of ventilation and, you know, trying to get the most fresh air in, into spaces. We're running the units longer, really pushing, pushing their capabilities. So, so this gets us, the, the last of our major physical plant HVAC systems, this gets that taken care of. That was going to be appearing on, on a capital request list and borrowing authorization request, whether it was this year or next year or the year after. It was going to be happening sometime in, in the next several years. So we're able to tick that off with 100% federal funds. The Wi-Fi system with more utilization of, of technology, again, which was another thing driven by the, by the pandemic. We're, we, we are at a point where our Wi-Fi system needs to be upgraded. And that, so that was going to be a request either this year, next year, or the year after. Probably next year, we were going to be looking, looking for funding for that. But we're able to do that using the ESR fund. So that relieves that, that, that won't, won't show up for, you know, useful life on these systems, probably about seven years. So, you know, we won't, we won't be bringing that back to the, to the three towns for, you know, another seven to, seven to 10 years. Key card door access system for primarily at Powder Mill and Woodland School to give more, we're, we're utilizing outdoor spaces more as a result of the pandemic, you know? We had the mask break stuff and we're trying to utilize some of, we even created a little bit of outdoor classroom space with the playground project that, that the town was very helpful in, in funding through the Community Preservation Act funds. So we're anticipating spending more time outside, but if you're spending more time outside and you need to get back into the building in an efficient manner, or in the event of an emergency, having more doors that have the key card access that staff can get, can get kids back in the building quickly and efficiently is, is certainly helpful. And then the outdoor speaker system, same kind of principle or concept in the event that we do have issues that we need to.
Like the bear this year.
Bear.
We had kindergartners out at recess and there was a bear in the baseball field. It was in the parking lot, jumped over the fence. It was heading straight towards Woodland School and the kids are out at the playground. And we don't have an outdoor speaker system there. So it, it's not necessarily like, you know, an armed intruder, but the reality is we could have a bear, we could have a fox, we could have animals on our property and we need to get our kids in quickly. So.
We have an access number of chickens today.
We, we've also worked closely with the Southwood Police Department and I don't know how much whether the state police were involved in, in the identifying these items, but we do work closely with the police department on identifying some of the, some of the security related measures that, that we're, we're trying to do here to make sure that kids are safe while they're on, while they're on our campus.
Right. And I think the biggest one there is the HVAC system at Woodland because if we had to come to you, we would be coming with a 600,000 ask for capital just to do the boiler system one year. And that's a lot of money and that would be the only project we can do. So we really feel like it's a super win for the three communities that we're able to use the ESR funds to accomplish this.
We would have David jump on it though.
You could put those in a.
We just, we had that experience at Town Hall so far.
Stephen, the, the school choice enrollment is in our favor, but what is the fixed cost increase associated with that?
School choice. Hang on for a second. I've got the number here.
The presentation says it's 130.
Cherry sheet. Yeah. So school choice going, going out. I have 73,000, just a hair under 73,000.
So, so if, if the enrollment is in our favor, right, and we get revenue per student, what is a fixed cost increase? You know, what's the cost of the increase?
So, so by the school choice program works, we have to, the, the students who, who we're responsible for financially, who are going out of our district, they're leaving our district, but we're responsible for them financially. So that's the $5,000 per student fee that, that's assessed to, to districts. So we have to carry that cost in our operating budget. The, it's, it's considered part of the net, net school spending requirement that we're, we're subject to. So it has to be part of the budget that includes town funds, state funds, the chapter, the chapter 70 funds. So that's in our budget. The revenue that we see from, from school choice students coming in gets parked in a revolving account. And that revolving account, those funds, because that's, those are students that we're not responsible for from a, from a foundation budget standpoint. Those funds, we've typically used them for out of district type, other out of district endeavors. So special, special education tuition charges and vocational tuition charges. Also sometimes it's a special education services. So for, for the, for FY23, based on the cherry sheet that was released back in, in January, the school choice receiving tuition, that money is going down by 87,000. And the school choice sending tuition is going up by, so what we're responsible for is an expense item is going up by 73,000. Those are based on the FY20 against the FY22 cherry sheet numbers, which actual numbers will vary, vary a little bit. And I'm not, I'm not recalling how we're tracking against the, the last estimate that the state had for FY22 cherry sheet, whether we're above or below that for the current year, but we're, we're, we're close.
So in other words, well, if a student from Springfield opts in, you know, if more of them opt in than, than opt out, which is the case, do we have a net gain or a net loss because of that?
It, it, it's, it's a net, it's a net gain, but the gain is realized in the school choice revolving account. So that's where, that's where the revenue goes. But the expense has to be captured in the operating budget. That's a regu, that's a regulatory thing that, that DESI, DESI imposes.
All right. So the revenue is not in these revenue numbers that you have on the sheet here. It's a revolving account that's off to the side.
Nope. They're down there.
Well, the revenue's not down there Jen. The, the revenue that comes into the revolving account, you don't, you don't see it here, but you do see the million dollar, million 55,000 that's coming out in terms of helping us to, to, otherwise those expenses would be buried somewhere up in the, up in the, the operating budget.
The expense, but we don't see the revenue.
That's correct.
That's in another.
Blowing account.
Which is not here. It's off to the side that they use it for.
Right. And then.
Right. Like our E and D, our grants, like they're not in there. It's what we're using from those revolving accounts that you see at the bottom.
That's what I'm saying. Cause I think this 881,000 should be less what they have for the revolving.
Well, 1.6 and he's going to use a million dollars of it this year.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep. But it's just like our budget, right? Again, it comes up all the time is we don't always see the source of revenue in their, but we're looking at the expense side of their budget. They're showing some of this stuff where they're taking in monies, but it's not all of it. Right? So. Yeah, we have, we have the, on, on our balance sheet, we have roughly 1.3 million in unreserved fund balance or the, the E and D funds and about 1.6 million in school choice revolving. And so we're, we're using portions of that, but not so much that we could wind up with a funding cliff and we can't, we don't have anything to throw at it next year. In which case you'd be, we'd be coming to you looking for, for you to cover that. So we're using a, a sizable amount, but not so much that we don't have it as a recurring revenue, revenue option next year and beyond. So you, you, you folks wouldn't want to clean out your free cash account to deal with a, a shoe in a particular year. Similar concept.
But that 130,000 expense fee, that's not negotiable, right? That's the cost to send the kids out.
Right. Yeah. Yes. Actually gets deducted off of the monthly chapter 70 payment that we receive. So we get a net payment from them. We have to recognize the expense, which is the deduction that they make against our, our chapter 70 allotment.
But let me preface my remarks because now I've sat through this twice and I want to commend you. Yeah. I think you guys do an excellent job.
Did we veer off course, Russ? Did we say anything?
I didn't even get a chance to thank you for that 16,000 that's going to be prorated. So I can announce it to the taxpayers, windfall. But anyways, on a serious note, even though we, we went through this, I understand the minimum contribution. I understand the fact that you're putting all this money into capital projects that'll save the district money in the long run. We're still looking at a close to a 9% increase. And that is a tough nut to swallow because I don't know about Granville and Tallinn, but we got 30 million dollars worth of projects to our structures that we're, we're looking at. We've got a $2 million project, the roof and the ventilation of this building. Hopefully the community will be able to use a million dollars worth of a community preservation funds for the roof, but we're still going to have to come up with another million plus for the HVAC. If, if push comes to shove, I know we mentioned your E and D, which is our equivalent to our free cash. And I'm not asking people to use up all their free cash. We don't. But we do put some of that, our free cash towards the budget to help the tax rate. So and, and we do know this budget is based on the governor's January budget. And normally doesn't the House and the Senate come up with additional funds?
More often than, yeah, more often than not, it, it, it grows from the governor's budget. There have been years where it's actually gone in the, in the opposite direction. But that, that would be less typical. So, yeah, there, there may be some growth. If it changes, it's more likely, if it changes from the governor's number, it's more likely that it, it would, the, the minimum local contribution numbers would.
Go up.
Typically go up.
Like they did last year. They, from the budget that we brought forward to where it was passed, it went up 127,000 in Southwick's required local contribution. So that's why it looks like such a huge jump is because you're already starting 200,000. That's that delta that we talked about. Because we didn't come back for it last year, nor would we. But you're starting off at a $2,000 hole and to make yourself equal to where you would have been to start this year.
Yeah. And I, and I, and I understand that Jen, and I appreciate that. But this is still a, a, a very big increase. It's a lot larger than what we normally see and I'll, I'll leave it at that, but I know that we have to make decisions and we only have a few weeks to make decisions. But it's just like we ask most of our boards and commissions, or I'm sure we're going to be going back to most of our boards and commission and asking them to sharpen their pencils and do whatever they can do. Because right now, I, I, not to be repetitive, I don't know where I'm going to come up with that 30 million to fix roofs and buildings and, and buy boats and, and all these other things. This is a tough, tough situation we're in. So, but thank you for all the hard work you did in the presentation. You guys did an excellent job as usual. And Steve, if this is your last time, thank you very much for your service to our community.
I have something I wanted to say.
Okay.
I, I just, as a special.
I, I just, as a specialist teacher for over 30 years, um, in all those years, only once did I get trained in, in, um, circuit breaker. And typically the districts I've worked in send a secretary, she gets trained, she goes back, she looks at the IEPs and does circuit breaker. Um, but one district I worked in actually trained those of us who were writing those IEPs. And there is a way of, if, if that's happening in Southwood grade, I have no idea what you guys are doing. But we increased our circuit breaker revenue significantly when we trained the teachers that if you put SLP slash SLPA, you get reimbursed for an aid. If you put OT versus OT slash Coda, you get reimbursed for a Coda. The, those type of discrepancies, if that service delivery grid on those IEPs for circuit breakers are not crystal clear and done by the state's requirements, you could be losing money there. So I don't, I don't know whether you are, but I just want to plant that seed because a lot of districts are.
Yeah, no, that's.
Great information.
Great, great information. So the, the process of filing the claim right now falls on our, uh, director of student services or uh, and, uh, uh, one or more of our, uh, support staff folks who work closely with the, with the budget and the expenditures. But I'll, uh, I'll, I'll mention that to, uh, to Robin, that, that may be a, a way that could maybe maximize.
You know what? I write the IEPs. I don't know. It's easier to write SLP, SLPA, just in case I wanted the SLP. But for those circuit breaker kids, for the other kids, it doesn't matter, but for those circuit breaker kids, it absolutely does.
Yeah. Agreed.
So I think the training should go further than a secretary, that's all.
Yeah, right, right.
Back to whoever's signing those IEPs should be looking at every circuit breaker IEP really carefully.
Right.
So when you're, I'm a physical therapist, I, you kind of tweaked my interest here. So when you're filling those out, you're writing down.
I'm saying whether the kid needs.
Who's supposed to be getting the treat, who's supposed to be providing the treatment?
Right. So if I wrote PT slash PTA.
Yeah.
The state would reimburse us for a PTA, which is a significantly lower rate than a PT.
Absolutely.
So if I say this kid needs a PT, not a PTA, and put that in there, I'm getting reimbursed at a much higher rate.
Okay, and are they questioning that at all? As, as their, as their, as a requirement, like normally the difference between the PT and the PTA, one does the valves, one doesn't. So the treatments can be done by either. So if, so if you as a teacher are indicating that this child can only be seen by a PT, you would therefore then have to justify why an assistant couldn't provide that work. And if somebody comes back and questions you on it, and you're not doing that accordingly, then you could end up having money that you owe them back with interest and penalty.
I mean, you could look at, he needs a PT two times a month for an hour and the PTA, you need to break it down. You need to determine what the kid needs. But if they, I'm not saying give a kid a PT because you'll get more money, because a PT also costs more money. So I'm not saying that. I'm just saying a lot of times kids are getting that, that, these are, most of your kids, it's probably two or three percent of the IEPs that are out there. And if it's written with, those IEPs are written with a slash.
They'll give you the cheaper of the two.
They absolutely will give you, unless it's changed since my training, which it's been a while since I've been trained, but I doubt they change that. So it's just worth someone more than a secretary looking at that. And, and then really training those teachers or team chairs or whoever's writing those service delivery grids to make sure we're getting the most money the state can give us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the school department? Thank you for your time, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Next I have moderator. I don't know if she couldn't make it today.
She didn't extend her budget?
A little more for, uh, for conference travel? So I was just saying, the conference travel was, uh, the same.
Yeah.
That's easy.
Select board? Oh, oh, yeah. Right. Well, 250 is gone, so that's. Well, they're here, so we should look at them, right?
Well, the big thing on that is the, uh, new position.
The assistant for human resources. We budgeted 30,000 last year to start that process. And I believe they're looking for the total amount of 75, correct?
With the second question, this budget, 75?
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing, yeah. Not 38 and 75, just 75.
And did you actually make progress on this endeavor?
Yeah, yeah, I want to try to get it done before they throw me on office. So the, the theory so far, we have a job description written. And what's really happening in this town, and I laughed nine years ago when I got elected, is I was told you need an HR person, like, yeah, okay, whatever, sure, we do. You know, we do. And, and with Carl leaving in a couple of years, it seems that everyone's got a piece of HR in this, in this building, but no one has HR. So, and some of you guys in the private sector probably know a lot more about it than I do, especially in your banking world with HR. So the, the, the theory here is to actually get an HR person to handle all of HR. You know, not Art for 10 minutes, Jill for 10 minutes, and well, Russia can never find. So that, 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 that's all good. He sells flowers, what can I do? But that's, that's the whole process behind that is to actually take that away. Cause I don't think our next town administrator is gonna be able to handle everything that Carl does today and the HR element. And we've been fortunate, how long has Carl been here?
600 years.
600 years, B.C.
Since, uh, 1989.
1989, there you go. So our next town administrator, I don't want to be a jerk, will be lucky if he's here five years. Right, it's just.
Average is three to five years.
Three to five years. So we've been blessed that that knowledge of state here, we've been able to use it there. You know, like I tell people, you can love Carl St. Art, you can hate him. But he's a wealth of knowledge, right, and done both, right? But he, you know. There you go. That's, that's it in a nutshell.
Carl will watch the recording and be chuckling at some point.
Yes, he will.
Hopefully.
So that's the theory behind that, to actually get an HR position. And we're trying to move some rooms around now in town hall to figure out a spot for that position too, because it's gotta be private. You know, you can't have HR at your desk and, you know, he's right next, it doesn't work. That's what they tell me. I've never had a problem with my HR. She quit a long time ago. So, that's where that's at.
Some of the secretarial support to support boards and commissions that don't have secretarial support.
Yeah, whole other headache.
Correct, so, yeah, there was, there was some vacancies there, reassignment, support. Some of these boards, smaller boards are, that don't have their own secretarial support for their night meetings.
It's a double edged sword, right? So thanks to COVID and Zoom and everything else, now all we hear about is where's the minutes to that meeting? Well, they don't have a secretary, they haven't had a secretary in 20 years. But where's the minutes, you know? So to kind of comply with that and to get people off our backs, we need to, um, actually look at, and we should have looked at that years ago, right? Their volunteer boards, the least they can do is have a secretary for two hours once a month to take their notes and, and do it the right way. So that's where that's really coming from. The biggest part of that isn't so much the money, it's once again trying to find somebody, you know, like they're just not out there. So yes, we are trying to attempt to fix that.
For the finance review level funded. It's in there in the back. I have to see, we see stuff, it wasn't our package.
Oh, okay.
You also have, uh, a legal expenses. Operations, these operations, negotiated operations.
Yep. Yeah.
Advertising is looking for us for $5,000, right?
Yep.
Yeah, we also have a reserve fund transfer in front of us.
Right here, yeah.
Add to the fund for this, this year.
Is that a, something we have to vote on or is that?
We will be voting on the, uh, transfer.
After this?
But, yeah.
Sorry, I dropped this up in our, the finance committee meeting, but have we been pursuing opportunities to read ourselves off of, uh, you know, newspaper costs in favor of the town?
Statute, a lot of it's statutory.
Yeah. Statutory in that it says you have to.
Published.
Publish in the paper of record for the town, which is.
Okay, thank you.
For some items, some items, like if we're doing help wanted ads in the paper, maybe we should cut that out. But if it's legal notices, you know, it, it still stays.
We have our cannon, the billboard, Channel 15.
Yeah, absolutely.
Correct, and we're doing that too at a, you know, just so that people can't say they don't know, but the statutory piece needs to be.
Yeah, and it's crazy money, right? The papers get smaller and smaller and we can survive off the towns that have to.
Well, that's what they are doing.
That literally doing, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You got something for Board of Appeals also? A little bit, this is quick look. Yep, that's level 10. Yes, it is, small budget. It's on report, it's on report, same. Little funded, right?
Yeah.
Channel 15, and just woke up.
No, Channel 15, we actually have an individual now that, uh, is, is taking over the town crier sign, uh, Channel 15. Actually concentrating on it rather than having several different people trying to do a job that, uh.
He's more of a techie, so it's, it's, you know, Russ is trying to do the town crier and as you can see.
And that didn't work out.
It didn't, well, you know. But we think with the school system, we'd have a bunch of volunteer junk kids, but that doesn't seem to, yeah, we've tried that route. And, uh, this young man's out of Westfield and does a ton with their Channel 15. So luckily he had some time on his hands and we've been able to snag him. There's a lot of our meetings at night.
He comes to our meetings, he's reaching out to people, uh, people have contacted.
We can already see it, he's already posting.
He's posting stuff, he's keeping it fresh, he's, you know, where people actually gonna get a message out and you can read it.
Yeah.
So you've also got meeting coverage and support broken out there, so this person will actually be swamped for setting up a meeting.
He's been helping with some of that too, right?
Yeah, training and training others on how to do it.
Instead of different people from different departments.
Correct.
Well, Mr. Mowgli is getting rather old at this and he's been tired for a couple of years now.
But no, I mean, we, we spent, we made some investments in technology to support this hybrid Zoom. There's still, uh, last couple of pieces to fall into place. There's been a lot of support staff trained on how to do Zoom and how to, how to support the hybrids so that you don't have the board chairman trying to run a Zoom meeting while they're trying to run a meeting. And some have taken to it better than others, so that's why we're gonna bring some additional support to those boards.
Come a long way.
Correct. And if we make it, the other piece of it is, we, from a policy perspective, years ago, the select board asked, uh, please record your meetings and submit it to the town. And there were some boards that didn't want to come along. So we added it to the secretarial responsibility that as your, as a board secretary, your job description is before the meeting. So we're doing the same thing with hybrid Zoom, right? So we're gonna make it a responsibility of the board secretary or the support person to be able to record a Zoom meeting and run a hybrid Zoom meeting. So then if the board chair or the board members can't say, well, we don't have the time or the resources or the people to do hybrid Zoom, we're gonna bring that to you.
That sounds pretty dictatorial, but so far.
Carried and.
There hasn't been an uprising.
Not, no, not yet. Well, I almost had one the other night, but I had to run out, so.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, somebody set wallet computer on fire and run, right? So, yeah.
Perfect timing. Can't imagine it's all that.
All right, so, uh, we also have a breakdown here, a sheet of, uh, what's this equipment that's gonna be, uh, part of the Channel 15, uh.
So part, part of, part of that equipment list there is, uh, this becomes self fulfilling. Some of that is being able to use the Channel 15 revolving money. So we take in money from Comcast to be able to purchase certain equipment over the, to support our Channel 15 and broadcast operation. It becomes self fulfilling for recruiting people to work on the Channel 15 stuff if you have good gear. The kids from the school, kids from the public, look at Westfield, I mean, they have a group of, they have a whole broadcast studio, right? And they get a pretty good group of people, this guy Ken, one of them, to use that equipment and, and provide good programming and good stuff. So if we start to use some of the Channel 15 revolving and, and, um, that's what they call it, Channel 15 budget. Yeah, this is some equipment to update some of the aging equipment we have. They're also gonna relocate Channel 15 operations to a different space in this building. And so hopefully it'll stimulate more programming to be put on our Channel 15.
And if someone doesn't have the information, they have 10 copies here in front of me, you know, if it's not in your budget.
Is that this?
I have, yeah, 10 different copies.
Even then, we don't know what any of these are.
Well, what, what really happened is we had a great guy that did our Channel 15 forever. And he retired and our, our. Yeah, he just passed away. So our, you know, we had no issues, right? Art did it, knew what he was doing, had a great time, we all loved it. And then got replaced as time when I would people that maybe weren't as savvy. You know, so this is coming from a, a, a techie guy that knows the system.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, and that budget was in, like you say, the, the Comcast number comes in, this is where that comes out of. So when you tell them, well, we want you to go do the parade or we want you to do this or that, they look and say, well, you don't have the right equipment.
Yeah.
You know, this is what you really need. And luckily they've experimented with Westfield, these kids. So they've got it down, you know, they don't overspend their money, like they know what their.
Yeah.
They know the cheapest version, you got the best version to buy.
Yeah, no, and, and that's great, I, I appreciate that. I'm a IT guy anyway, and, um, I don't know what these are. I trust, I trust that they've got it.
They've got it down. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
And that trip to Florida, that's, uh, don't even worry. That's, uh.
It's a convention.
We have to go on.
Yeah.
I mean, it's required.
Right, right.
Yeah.
All right, moving along.
Yep.
Casual insurance. Slight increase.
We want to take a vote to accept the minutes and to vote on your.
Are you trying to rush us out just because Carl's not here?
We also need to set some dates per request of the town accountant so that we're not having our budget adjustments at the same night. So I guess you can attend.
In person or on Zoom, is she gonna, just wondering.
You gotta be two places at once though, I don't know. We want to do that.
Doesn't she have an assistant?
She's here too.
Oh, is she?
I think you could ask that question directly.
No, I don't want to waste a month, they, they apply all day. We'll let them sit there.
All right, yeah, so I'm not trying to rush things along.
If the flag in front of town hall is at half staff on Monday, Joe.
I've been dead for years, don't want you to worry about a thing.
All right, so the joint activity we could work on past the budget is, uh, the reserve fund transfer request for additional money for advertising, we were just talking about that. Uh, there is something in our packet that shows a breakdown of some of the expenditures for these advertisements.
Yep.
The stuff we got on the table today, it's in there, just to give you an idea of where some of these monies are going. Uh, we both need to vote on that separately.
Yep, you guys can go first if you want.
Uh, can I, well, are there any more questions about this? Have you had a chance to look at this at all? Was it for 11,000?
Original budget was 17,000, um, eight?
This is 8,000.
8,000. Yep.
All right.
I, I, I'm trying to help out. I'm the coach, right?
Yeah.
Any questions, discretion?
Um, yeah, so. Yeah, so again, this, referring to this list of items, so anything that doesn't say legal advertisement is fair game for, you know, a no cost or low cost alternative.
I can either confirm or deny that.
Or, or is this? It'd be great to see like, okay, what is our requirement for this? In the scheme of things.
I agree with you though, I mean, just looking through some of these things, what do you have to, I mean, I know coming from, coming from the banking world, there are some bill ads that you have to print in the paper, but looking at some of these things like, do we have to put bids in papers? Is that?
Over a certain dollar value, it has to go up to bid. Yeah.
Some of these positions is part time. Yeah, short job ads.
Those ones that I was alluding to, like if it's a help wanted ad, you know, we we run some, for some position, we run them in like the beacon, which is the mass municipal.
Which is very expensive.
Yeah, I mean, we should be.
But we shouldn't be advertising in the west coast paper for, you know, part time positions, we should put them on the website or, or some other place.
They've been using, not LinkedIn, but what's the other one?
Indeed, there's a charge for it too.
Just figured out a way to get around that.
Okay, then.
Yeah, there's some way, or we're stealing those applications online and calling them directly, so that actually.
So when a board says, hey, we need a ad, it does like, shall sign off on it or is there a central area that signs off that could almost be a gatekeeper to, hey, you know, there's an opportunity to put this on channel fifteen instead of the reminder or instead of.
I believe everything goes through Carl.
Okay, so maybe, you know, as a practice, maybe he's already doing it, but he could be, he could be. You know.
Right.
Discriminatory about it and save some money and then going forward, people will be aware that, you know.
I think what we've learned in the past is putting it on, whatever we allow for social media, doesn't seem to pull them in. So then, then it's the indeed or the state one that you talked about, you know, they start, we seem to start low first.
Yeah.
That, you know, the easy hanging cheap fruit.
Okay.
And then we end up spending all kinds of money and still getting nobody, mind you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're gonna get people from newspapers, so just.
No, I.
I mean, yeah, I'm just looking like several thousand dollars just scanning this that you could probably go to anything else that was just requested.
As long as it's not allowed to be.
Bidders that are bidding on things that we need are gonna know where to look, you know.
Right, but it's.
They're only looking there because, looking in the newspaper because that's where we've been putting the ads, but if we tell them and over time we're putting it on channel fifteen, they'll look there, right?
Yeah, and some of the stuff like these roof projects, it's another 10,000 to put it out to bid, we've been using another service to actual qualified bidders and they'll get the 15 bids for the roof.
Yeah.
And, you know, that world, it's definitely helped, but Carl will come right up front and say it's 10 grand to go that way, but you get actual qualified bidders.
So you'd like to ask the board, the select board here to do a quick review, the CEO to.
Yes.
Review your advertising policies.
Yes.
And procedures.
Yes.
Yeah, if elected, I will take care of that. I'll check with Carl on Monday.
Alright, good point, you had to review that stuff time to time.
Oh, we should, absolutely.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, finance committee, all those in favor or need a motion?
I'll make a motion to.
To approve the $8,000.
Appreciate $8,000.
Okay, is there a second? All, we need a roll call vote, all in favor, are I.
Karen, I.
David, I.
Paul, I.
Alita, I.
Richard, you're voting because I believe Terry is no longer with us, so in the absence of a regular member, you vote, so you're voting, thank you. I believe that was.
Sheila, I.
Let's fasten make the motion from the select board to approve.
Doug Morgan will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, I.
We're gonna approve the minutes.
Russ Fox will make a motion to approve the select board minutes of March fifth.
Doug Morgan will second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Morgan, I.
Chairman, probably would like to sign this. Chairman. And I was instructed to slide it under the primary department door, oh, were you on the way out? For processing. And the other thing that we need to do while we're together, that we can do is decide dates when we're gonna get together, I mean separately, convene to review the budget. Because the town accountant suggested that she didn't want us meeting at the same time because she needs to attend, she wants to attend both meetings. And as good as she is, you can't be too close to that one. So if you look at our calendars. What's next week looking like? Usually typically, we'd spend two nights, finance committee looking over the budget. What's next week looking like for people?
I'm gonna be out of town for a few days next week, this is Laura.
Oh. Okay, now I'll get a better picture.
Alright, what day do you be absent? Laura?
What?
Days, you know which days you'll be away?
I'll be away Monday and Tuesday.
Next week.
Yep, so that's two, and you wouldn't be able to post it anyways for, you know.
Sure.
Because we need, we need time to, you need the 48 hours.
Correct, so Wednesday, Thursday or Friday of next week, not Friday. That wasn't set, the real drill in. Wednesday or Thursday, anybody have a preference? No?
Thursday.
Thursday? So that'll be the 24th. That means you guys have to meet some other night.
Right, I mean, but this isn't something we have to get done by April 1st either.
No.
No, but you know what? I'd like to start early because it already takes.
Right, right, because.
Yeah, I don't know what time.
5:30 downstairs in our cubicle or no, we're gonna go to the auditorium. Downstairs, what's your preference?
Doesn't matter.
For this, the cubicle's fine, you know, downstairs conference room meeting right there, 5:30.
That's the 22nd?
Twenty fourth.
Twenty fourth.
Oh, excuse me.
More than meetings in the building if you want to use this room.
What's that?
There's no other meetings in the building that night if you want to use this room.
Good point. I don't particularly care about using this room, how about downstairs, do you have that?
Blowers louder above your head. Get the blow of the wind above your head comprehensive too.
Yeah. Yeah, but you're closer and you can hear what people are saying. You can hear what people are saying there. Unless, do you have the schedule for use, is that room available on the 24th? It is. Alright, now how about the following week for finance committee? The week of April 3rd to the 9th.
I'm out the whole week, so what do we need to do?
It's all good?
No, I'm out the whole week.
Well, you're out the whole week. We can go to the next week. About the 12th, that's a Tuesday? No? What's good for you?
Could we do the, the last week in March? So we have the 24th, but one day the next week.
This coming week's the week of the 20th.
The week of the 28th? Yeah.
Yeah, well, you'd be super efficient and do that. I mean.
I'm heading into my busy season, so. Works, that week works for me.
That's good, the week of the 28th?
Yeah, I think Tuesday.
Tuesday's okay?
Yeah.
Tuesday, okay?
That's the 29th?
Yes.
Twenty nine.
5:30.
5:30.
Dave, do you have the schedule for the 29th downstairs in the closet?
A lot of meetings aren't posted yet, that's probably a planning board night. For here.
Not here, I don't want, I want to go downstairs in our room that nobody could.
Tuesday night, Tuesday night, there's usually nothing going on unless there's a planning board meeting, that would be up here.
So you're free.
Alright, so we're good. We want the small room.
Right.
I just don't know who else, who else meets in there? Cable advisory and you. You're all done. Why don't we settle the joint meeting later on? Because you guys.
Yeah.
Have to set your meetings as well.
You just took all the good days.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. March Madness.
The date of the March, the May town meeting?
Seventeen by 17th.
So basically, we gotta have the budget put together by the middle of April. We can, we can set our meetings next Monday night when Carl's there and I'm gonna suggest a work session on a separate night.
Yeah, we could call this a work session as well. Which means what, you don't, you don't go over?
Yeah, go ahead.
Let's not call it, yes, you want to vote. Alright, regular meeting.
Yeah.
Posted meeting.
I think what we've done in the past is it's been a regular meeting and we just go through and then at the end vote where you go for, you know, unless there's something that comes up that is a disagreement, then we do. Vote separately on that item, but not the whole.
You're right.
Because otherwise you're like voting every three minutes.
Karen is at 17th, May 17th.
Alright, so that's the only issue that we need to share with you, we have one other issue, I guess we need to talk about. So I don't know if you're even sticking around, are you leaving or?
Russ Fox makes a motion for the select board to adjourn.
Doug Morgan will second.
In favor, Joe DDI.
Doug Morgan, I. Yeah, pleasure working with you, come back soon.
Yeah.
Or as they say, we've gotta stop meeting like this.
Right.
You guys are gonna be wrong.
Okay, so I'll drop this off at the accountant's office. Now, the other issue is the annual town report, we're terribly late on that, my fault because I didn't get this through a meeting earlier. Y'all have a copy of that in front of you, I think Nina sent you an email. My thoughts are this, at this late date, rather than try to rewrite the whole thing. We could change a little bit of the language regarding the pandemic. And how that affected the budget process. Actually, it's the third paragraph where we could change. And substitutive language, something to the effect of now that it seems the COVID virus is mostly behind us, it seems. We're, we're faced with new challenges such as inflation and supply chain shortages. And. Other than maybe changing a date or two here, I don't think we have to change anything more than that. And I'm really concerned if we get this to Nina ASAP, so I don't want to like, it would be my preference not to wait until our next meeting to approve something, I'd rather get it designed right now. Or designate one person to make a few changes by vote and have them submitted to Nina on Monday.
Terry seems like a good candidate for that, but he's not here.
He is very good at that, isn't he?
Yeah, so that third paragraph, I mean, we don't, we, the reference to the entree for the next budget is not true, right? So we don't want to scratch any reference to that.
Yeah, I would eliminate, I mean, you can keep the COVID virus has changed the way that's finance committee viewed the budget and held the readings, okay, that's still current, right? So if we kept that.
But what message are we trying to say here is?
Well, just, just trying to bring this up to date, this is from, remember, this annual town report is looking back on the last year.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, we are.
No.
We are, we are.
Get less revenues from the state. We got all kinds of grants, so I don't know if that's true.
Well, we got federal grants.
Right, but we should probably just, I mean, we got ARCA funds, things like that, that were directly related to COVID. Right, so that was in the past, but that's not coming forward.
No, no, we're looking back.
Okay.
We go back from today.
Yeah.
I mean. Over the last year, just to back up, a year ago, we didn't, we really didn't know what was gonna happen in terms of funding, revenues, we didn't know. But over the course of the last year, actually two years, what's happened is the federal government had two or three big programs where they handed out all kinds of money. ARCA is one of them, the CARES Act may be another one, where the town received substantial amounts of money to help offset directly costs at in-town government related to the COVID virus. As well as address certain categories of projects such as public health and.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
I think you just wordsmithed the heck out of that. Were we recording that? Because it's.
Yeah, all you do is remember what I said.
It's on here.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, the second paragraph already references the pandemic and I think the mess, you know, I, I think it's sufficient to leave it at that and, and, and just end with together we'll accomplish what is invested into our community. Period, because why have any more detail about budgets or?
Are there requirements on what we have to address in a, in a statement?
No.
Nope, okay. So then, and I would go from 2020 to 2022.
Yeah. Yeah, change the date, we gotta move that forward.
But basically, I would just say stretch, scratch the third paragraph and change the date in the middle of the second paragraph when you're done. And who's, you know.
Alright, would somebody want to make a motion to have somebody else do the final draft of this and submit it based on what our conversation is here?
I'll be happy to do it, so.
I'll make a motion that Dave updates our.
I'll second.
Okay, any other conversation?
And no pride of authorship, I'll put forth a draft which is essentially eliminating that third paragraph, if anybody wants to, you know, like Terry or whoever.
Can you, can you work on this over the weekend?
I'll do it when I get home.
Alright, can you send out a draft?
I'll do that.
Immediately?
Will do.
Just for comments.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion, no, all those in favorites, roll call vote, are I.
Karen, I.
David, I.
Paul, I.
Alita, I. Sheila, I.
Alright, thank you for that, like you say, it's my fault that this is a last minute rush, I meant to bring it up at our last meeting, I completely forgot about. And Robin was asking, looking for this a month ago, I think.
Every board does the same thing.
Well, we usually, we usually try to say a top stuff, so. Okay. Make the motion in a second. Because I'm secretary today too. Alright, anybody else have anything else to discuss besides lunch? Alright, we went a little bit longer today than normal, but it happens sometimes. Alright, so we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All in favor, roll call vote, are I.
Karen, I.
David, I.
Paul, I.
Alita, I.
Richard, I.
Sheila, I.